During our work session, and is always the case in a work session, we are talking among ourselves and with staff and consultants. But we don't have an interchange with the audience during a work session. But if you have thoughts or questions, you can always email us. I see Courtney is right there, and you can check in with Courtney also. And we're very happy to get your emails and your comments otherwise. So, we will now begin our work session. Okay. Would the councilors please identify themselves, starting with Councilor Bennett?
Daniel Benjamin, Ward 6.
Councilor Brad Nanty.
Mayor Anna Peterson.
Councilor Wong Benars.
Tom Anderson, Ward 2.
Diana Dickey, Ward 5.
Jim Lewis, Ward 8.
All right, and staff, will you please identify yourselves?
Alan Danen, Public Works.
Steve Power, City Manager.
Jerry Moore, Police Chief.
Casey Duncan, Deputy City Manager.
All right, and we have guests, starting over here.
Tim Ganey, DLR Group. I'm the Design Leader from our Portland office.
Jake Davis from DLR Group, Police Planner. I think you've met me before.
Yes, we have.
And Garth Brandau, CB2 Architects. We're the local architectural group involved.
And Kirk Sund with CB2 Architects.
Wonderful, welcome everyone. All right, are we going to open with a staff presentation perhaps? Oh, I'm sorry. Warren Bednarz has a statement to read, and then we will go to staff.
Thank you. I have a statement to make here. I want to declare an actual conflict of interest because one of the properties being considered or discussed for the proposed police facility is owned by a member of my family. The property I'm referring to is located immediately to the south of the library and is known as the Commercial Leslie Site. I do not personally own the property.
Thank you. All right. Alan, are you going to open?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll just kick things off and then turn it over to our consultants for presentation. The objective tonight is really to follow up from our last work session. So, the council asked us to come back with cost estimates for the top two sites. The Leslie Site, just south of the existing Civic Center, and the former O'Brien Site. So, we've done that. We've got cost information for you. And we've also got some refinements to the design so that you can see kind of how the building looks on each site. Our consultants are going to go through that pretty quickly because the real objective tonight is to get to a place for you all to ask questions and have discussion about the facts they present. So, about fifteen or twenty minutes, they'll go through the information they've got, and then the rest is time for you all to ask questions and talk about what they present. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tim and the consultant group.
Well, good evening, and thank you for having us. As Alan mentioned, we're going to go through this fairly quickly just to sort of orient you to some of the pieces, many of which the council has seen before. But this first piece is just really to talk a little bit about existing conditions. The Police Department is operated in about forty-six thousand square feet of space, but it's spread over a number of different sites. Twenty-six thousand square feet in the Civic Center, with other aspects, as we've talked about, that are off-site, particularly WVCC, the Crime Lab, a number of property and evidence pieces, SWAT, and so forth. We went through a pretty detailed programming exercise, needs assessment exercise, intended to understand Salem Police Operations. We broke this down into a number of different operational categories across the department to a total square footage recommended of about one-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand square feet. That includes a grossing factor to allow for the translation to a building, and that's a number that we've shared on several other occasions. Site categories. We worked within criteria that was established by the, or guidelines that were established by the IACP, the International Association of Chiefs of Police. These categories fell into three general buckets, sort of across location, cost, and site suitability. We put this criteria in front of council. Council ranked these in sort of order of preference, and really, central location, focus on property acquisition and development cost, and service to the city were the top three ranked criteria. And so, weighted criteria was established to look at sites, which started out as looking at thirty sites around Salem. That list of thirty sites using this criteria was then narrowed down and reduced down to eight sites. Those eight sites were looked at at a greater level of detail, and were reduced to sort of four finalists. At the last council work session, we brought the four finalists into play, and that was reduced then down to two sites. The Mission and Commercial Site, and the Commercial and Division Site, the O'Brien Auto Site, were the two finalists, and those are the sites that, as Alan has suggested, are going to be looked at in greater detail this evening. And so with that, I'm going to hand this off to my colleague, Tim, and we'll walk through the two site plans and some of the massing plans.
Thank you. So, like Jake said, you've seen this before, but just sort of a review of where we're at. So, what you're going to see are some diagrams of taking one-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand square feet and really laying them on the site in a very efficient, value-based way to yield a high-functioning police station. So, we're taking into account site access, vehicular access, both for police as well as public, as well as required parking spaces. So, this is a diagram showing you, we're starting on Site 2, so this is the Commercial and Leslie Site, just south of the library. So, there is the existing city-owned parking structure, and then south of that, it would be the site that's bounded by Leslie Street, Commercial, Mission, and Liberty. One-way traffic heading north on Liberty, and then obviously, one-way traffic heading south on Commercial. So, it would be a, in order to get all the required parking to be accommodated, it would be a four-story building. But due to the topography of the site, which is significant, it's actually really only three levels on one side and four on the other. We're using topography in our favor here to actually get some structured parking in order to house about one-hundred-and-fifty spaces on one level and then on the other. And then, there are, the top deck of the existing city-owned parking structure would also be used for this site. So, it actually cuts down on the amount of structured parking that would have to be built on this site. It's really just leveraging current resources that the city has. So, the next series of sort of diagrams is what this would sort of, it's more of a three-dimensional, think of it as a three-dimensional organization of the program. It's not exactly what the building would look like. It's just showing, we're site-testing this facility, and this is about the size that we would need in order for the building to function at one-hundred-and-fifty, one-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand square feet.
We're not assuming that the building would be orange, by the way.
With no windows. So, this is an aerial view, so we're looking, in this case, southeast. The new police station would be set here. This is the structured parking that I was talking about, and as you move to the south, the site slopes down. But on the north end, it's actually at grade. So, really, you would come in off of Leslie at grade, and this would be parking for police vehicles. To the other side here is the dedicated parking for the public, so the public could have access directly into the police station. The lobby would be located in this area here. Sort of a view looking the other way, so this is at the, is that Mission Street here, and then Liberty as you head north. So, this is that prominent corner. The public parking would be right around to the side of the building. We're trying to maximize the footprint area of this site. It is a little bit smaller than the O'Brien Site, but it is a lot more dense, and we're leveraging, like I mentioned before, that, the city-owned parking resource to the north, which is only the top deck of this parking structure. So, it would not impact library parking. Again, just gives you a feel of what sort of the size of the building would be. It would not be orange, unless you wanted it to be orange. So, this is representing a four-story building, but again, it slopes from low here to high as you move northward. And then, the perspective looking south on Commercial. So, there's a pretty tall, I don't really remember, how many stories is this one? Five? Five stories? Directly across the street. So, in terms of scale, it's pretty proportional. Actually, it would be shorter than the building next door.
The meridian.
The meridian, thanks. And then we'll move over to the O'Brien Site. So, this site is bounded by Division Street, Liberty as we head northward, and then Commercial as we head south. This site is relatively flat. It's the larger of the two sites. However, the shape of it's very long and linear, which in a way drives us to a position where the building needs to be long and linear, as well as the structured parking in order to be accommodated here. You'd have to build more structured parking on this site compared to Leslie because we're not, we're not, there's not the resources that we can borrow from for this site. We have the on-grade public parking directly to the east with, sorry.
And I'm just going to interrupt to say that that also accounts for a bit of the cost differences. When we get to the costs, you'll see between these two sites, the difference is not tremendous, but it's a little bit leveraged in favor of the Leslie Commercial Site, only because that existing parking deck offsets a bit of the parking need.
So, for here, we have forty public spaces at grade, and then one-hundred-and-seventy-five police parking spaces, that's for the police vehicles, and then one-hundred-and-eighty-five staff parking. We are assuming there could be up to forty-five spaces at the Park Aid. That's mainly for future growth. The Leslie Site was the same way, in terms of assuming that growth. So, this places a structured parking garage to the north of the building, and the building occupies the corner of Division and Commercial, which is part of the city guidelines in terms of development. Same as the other site, we're just looking at generally how the building is organized in a three-dimensional way. Again, this one is also four stories. It simply stacks thirty-seven thousand five hundred feet vertically, four times. So, again, we're occupying that corner of Division. The one-way traffic, as you move north, that's where we placed the on-grade public parking, which I think I covered.
Right, you'll see that in another view.
It does require us to rethink this intersection to allow access eastbound on Division, thinking about the flow of police vehicles in and out of the police station in order to reach other areas of the city. So, here's a view of that. In this view, it's an aerial view. Again, we're looking northwest. You can see the structured parking deck here, and then we maximized the on-grade surface parking, which is basically all of this area here. Some of that is dedicated toward police vehicles, and this front part is dedicated toward the public. It would be fenced off because you don't want to mix public parking with secure police vehicles, obviously.
It affords for a little bit of a service area to the backside of the building to provide access to the evidence garages and the Sally ports and so forth, and those would be accessed off of that at-grade parking lot.
So, this site has, the access is a little bit more challenging on this site because of the number of places you can come on and off of the street compared to the Leslie Site, but it is a larger site area to work with. This is a perspective view looking south on Commercial, so there's quite a bit of parking deck located there. Very efficient, value-based design in terms of getting all the parking required. And then, the corner would have, could have quite a presence on the corner of Commercial and Division. So, this is a perspective looking north. Again, wouldn't be orange, but this is sort of to give you the idea of the scale of the building.
Keep it on that view for the moment. So, having looked at these sites, I guess the next part is maybe the part that we've all been waiting for, which is to start to look at really the costs that go with that. And a little disclaimer to start this is that, you know, we set the values, obviously, for the program and the parking stalls and the numbers that need to go into the deck. We worked with a professional cost consultant who is actually someone that local contractors use to take off their costs. And we're in a place in the market right now that's pretty unique. We're seeing levels of escalation in the market that we haven't seen in a number of years, and so that permeates some of these pieces. But to give some context to this, really, the first four categories here, A, B, C, and D, are really what you would call sort of hard-construction-related items. And so what that's built out of is sort of building construction, basically about one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet, at what breaks down to, it wasn't done on a square-foot basis. This was a material takeoff based on sort of the exact specifications of what is in the program, and it breaks down to about two-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars a square foot. There is a parking structure that is about one-hundred-and-fifty stalls, so that has a cost associated with it. And there is site and demolition work, basically site work that's needed on both sites, that is part of the hard-construction cost, and the state mandated solar allowance is included in that. So, from a total construction cost perspective, on both sites, you see that there's a very, very similar dollar value. There's a slightly different parking structure-related cost, and a slightly different site cost. There's more site and demolition work that needs to be done on the O'Brien Site than needs to be done on the Leslie Site, but statistically not tremendously different between the two sites. And then, the other items that fall below that fall into what we would call project costs. And those include things like intersection improvements, which are really necessary. Tim pointed out the intersection improvement at Division and Liberty, I should say. That's unique to that site. In the line F, for furniture fixtures and equipment, FF and E, this is a pretty unique item relative to a police facility. And one thing I want to point out is that this is a large number, no question. It's taking a percentage of the cost of construction, but please do consider the fact that this is a twenty-four-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week, three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day-a-year facility with people that wear gun belts and are hard on furniture, so this is not something to be taken lightly in terms of furniture. There also is significant equipment that's part of the mix here, traditional office equipment like copiers and shredders and so forth, but also things like drying and fuming cabinets and pieces of specialty equipment, equipment to charge cameras and flashlights and so forth. There is an art allowance. There are development costs, which involve things like professional fees and so forth. There is property acquisition in both cases, that that's line H, or line J, I should say. The bond issuance expenses, sort of the cost of doing business there. And then, the last two items fall into the category of escalation. And I talked a little bit about the unique place in the market, and basically, assuming that this were to, the bond were to go in November of this year, there's an assumption that you would sort of work toward the midpoint of construction, which probably would be sometime early in 2018. And so, trying to plan for that escalation, we're seeing something on the order of six to seven percent on an annual basis for escalation in the market right now. And so, this is a fairly conservative placeholder for that. There's also a contingency on the whole project cost, which we feel like at this level, and our estimator feels strongly that this level of contingency is appropriate for this preliminary point. This is something that obviously can be reduced as time goes on, that works up to a total, which is just a little over seventy-nine million dollars for the Leslie Site, and just a little bit over eighty-one million dollars for the O'Brien Site. And this is based on the full recommended program of one-hundred-and-fifty or one-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand and change square feet. One quick item that I wanted to mention here is that, based on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar assessed home value, the tax impact of these two columns here would be eight dollars and sixty-six cents on a monthly basis for a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home for the Leslie Site, and about nine dollars and eight cents for the O'Brien Site. So, you can see it's about a fifty-cent difference on a monthly basis, you know, amortized across the two sites. What we looked at then was what are some different options that could be available from the recommended program that we just talked through? There's been a lot of discussion about WVCC as an item, and if you were to remove WVCC, what the impact of that would be. We talked a little bit, we were asked the last time, to look at a de-rating of the growth factor across the facility from a rate of about two-point-four officers added per year over thirty years to a rate of about one-point-eight. And so that has an impact of about six-thousand square feet over the facility. We combined some different options, just to provide some planning criteria here, removing WVCC and reducing growth. There's also a line to eliminate all growth in the facility, as well as removing WVCC and eliminating growth. So, those options are available, and they're in front of you. There's also an option for urban renewal financing for off-site construction at the Site 13, at the O'Brien Site. And so, there's some range in here from the total project cost of about sixty-eight million on the low end to a total project cost of about eighty-one million dollars at the high And that's the end of our set presentation. We're happy to open it up to questions.
Counselor Lewis, and then Counselor Dickey, and Counselor Anderson.
Two questions. In the report, there's two numbers for the LaValle Communications Center. One is for square footage. One is twenty-four thousand nine hundred and four square feet, and the other, oh no, yeah, ten thousand one hundred and thirty square feet. So, which one is it? Page 2. It has ten thousand one hundred and three square feet.
That's what's at the current rental facility, and the value that was removed as part of the program is the program allotment for WVCC, which is slightly larger than the existing.
Is that the twenty-four thousand nine hundred and four?
Yeah, Jake.
What? Is this off your program? So, this includes EOC?
Right, that includes the EOC. That also includes a building grossing factor, departmental grossing factor.
EEOC?
Emergency Operations Center.
So, the Emergency Operations Center is not being taken out in this calculation?
Correct.
Just the Communication Center?
Correct. Our recommendation was to, the Emergency Operations Center was more integral to the police facility than to WVCC, but that's something that could certainly be decided.
Okay. And my other question is, if you could go back to the slide before this one, the amount for property acquisition budget. And let's talk specifically about the O'Brien Site, because I understand it is actually on the market, has a sales price. So, I'm curious how you came to that figure, and let's use the O'Brien Site to be specific.
So, I can answer that, Counselor Lewis. We worked with our Real Estate Division in Urban Development, and in order to have an apples-to-apples comparison here, we used the real-market value that's listed through Marion County for all those properties. With one exception, there was a property that had a recent sale price that was higher than that, so we went with that, just to be conservative. The list price has increased since our last work session, and so we felt like just to keep things on an even comparison between the two sites, we'd use the Marion County values.
Okay, so what is the current list price for the O'Brien Site?
It's three?
Yeah.
About six-point-five million dollars.
So, quite a bit higher than the real-market value on Marion County.
That's correct.
So, you'd have to assume your estimates are quite a bit low.
Well, you know, if I may point out one fact in that, when you're looking at two sites at this stage of the game, there's a number of due diligence issues that will come into play as well through the negotiation process of securing that property. And so, there's a number of factors. There's site assessments, there's environmental factors, there's other mitigation strategies or issues that would very well come up in either site that you would negotiate out with that seller. And so, yes, it may appear to be low based upon the listing price, but who's to say the leasing price is realistic, so to speak? And we know the local market conditions as well. You know, the strategy would be to go forward with a good faith effort to try to secure the property and deal with all the issues before you close on the property.
Thanks.
Counselor Dickey? Thank you, Mayor. So, do you have a number for the difference in the tax revenue by taking either one of these sites off of the tax rolls? What impact does that have to the city, or is there a significant difference between the two sites?
So, I don't have the exact tax impacts in front of me. I know we pulled it for the O'Brien Site in the past, so we could come back with that. But their real-market value is assessed at about the same thing, so the difference would be, I think, fairly negligible.
So, it's probably more the size of the property versus, okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I guess my first question is related to the staff. On the staff report that we got earlier today, and it's now printed out, as I read it, the...
I read it on my phone.
Yeah, I did too, and then I asked to have it printed out because I don't read on phones very well. And I can't find it right now, but my notes indicate that when you looked at the number of police officers' growth per year, the original factor was two-point-four, and then we also asked you to look at one-point-eight. But then, when I see the staff report, when it talks about one-point-eight, it talks about it over forty years, but when it talks about two-point-four, it talks about it over thirty years. Thus, we end up with the same number. Why didn't we compare both over either thirty years or forty years?
I know in taking the reduction that's in this summary, which is actually the reducing growth, it's option two, that reduction was based on de-rating the growth over the same timeframe. So, what that equates to, Counselor Anderson, is at one-point-eight, it's a growth of fifty-four officers over that thirty-year timeframe, and at two-point-four, it's a growth of seventy-three officers over that timeframe, so it's the difference of nineteen officers.
Well, I understand that, because we talked about that at the last work session.
Right.
But I found it now in the staff report. It's at the bottom of page three, last sentence. The recommended Salem Police Department program projects growth in sworn officers to two-sixty from the current one-eighty-seven officers, a growth rate of two-point-four officers per year over thirty years, or one-point-eight officers per year over eighty years. I'm just curious as to why the staff went to thirty on one and forty on the other. And, you know, I don't think this question is directed to you, Jake, because the staff pulled this report out.
Give us an extra ten years of life.
When we...
Well, I understand that. It could give us extra years, but we ought to compare the numbers for each year, not because if we increase one-point-eight to forty years, it equals the same number of officers. Shazam!
If I...
To quote that great police officer.
So, I think if, I'll attempt to answer your question based on what's in the report for the meeting on the 29th, which is available online.
But they're going to bring some more?
We, what the staff report is indicating is that, yes, in comparing thirty to forty years, if you look just specifically at thirty years, the ratio is the two-point-four. You spread that out over forty years, then it's the one-point-eight. That's just saying that it's an equivalent number. But when the architects looked at reducing the growth factor, they...
they stuck purely on the thirty-year mark. That is correct.
Okay, that's good. That, that's, that's helpful. I'm, I'm not sure I agree with that comparison, but it's, it's helpful to understand how you got it. I, I want to talk about parking for a bit, if we could. I'm looking at the parking at the O'Brien site, the parking to the north of the, of the police building. Is that two stories or one story?
Because it has the wall on the street.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I can't tell. I mean, it looks like it might be two stories, not one. Yeah. I'm looking at aerial group looking northeast on Site 13. I mean, you can look at almost any aerial group. Aerial group in the corner of Commercial and, and Division. Yeah.
So maybe I, to clarify. So it's two levels of parking, but one level is on the ground.
Yeah.
And one level is structured.
All right.
It's, it's a single level.
Single level of structured parking.
What does that mean?
It means that, that...
It has a second floor.
The second floor is structured, meaning that requires a structure to hold it. But the level underneath it is just on the ground.
So as you look at it north there, you can drive in and you can park on the ground floor?
Correct. Police vehicles only.
Right, right, right. Or at least police employees only, because I think that's looking toward the civilian employees more than it is toward the police employees, or the police cars.
It's, it's staff. It's, it's police, it's non-public.
When we say police vehicles, we're talking about marked vehicles.
Right, I understand that.
That sort of thing.
So we had a long discussion at the last work session about the possibility of, say, building out to some lesser amount, and then in the future, adding something above it or beside it. And you were quite, it was quite understandable after your explanation that that's really not the way you can build things because of the unique designs for police departments. That doesn't hold true for a parking structure, does it? In other words, you could have surface parking there north of that, and at some point in the future, if you need more parking, you can build it up.
You mean, you mean buy additional?
No, I mean, have one...
Right. Double-decade, essentially, at some point in the future. And the answer, the answer is yes.
And, and you could have surface parking. Would it be any extra cost today to plan for a second level of parking at some point in the future?
You'd need to put foundations in.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a lot. But, but you'd, you'd be 150 spaces short.
Right, well, that, that moves into my next question. Yeah. Because there's 150 spaces at, on the top level of that parking garage?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and this is assuming that we're putting forty-five spaces in the parcade.
Well, that goes to my next question. Are you talking about the Marion Street Parcade?
Indeed, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And there are a thousand-plus spaces in the Marion Parcade, are there not? And what is the current occupancy of that on a regular day-to-day basis? You may not know that, the staff would know that. Yeah. So Counselor Bennett has said it's a few hundred. So I, I've heard that it might be different. So let's say it's forty percent, to be generous. There's 600 spaces in the Marion Street Parcade that, if you really look at it, if you go from the north of the, the parking you had planned to wherever the folks would get in, it's not much of a difference in a walk.
No, it's, yeah, the, the distance is about 650 feet, which isn't, well, you know, basically two football fields.
Yeah.
Which is doable. It's just a long walk.
I, I, I guess my question...
For certain vehicles, obviously, there's some you wouldn't want to put that far away.
To staff is, would it be feasible to get rid of that second level of parking and instead require 150 spaces to be in the Marion Parcade for both officers and civilian employees? And that's not a very far walk from there to there.
Hundred and ninety-five. Hundred and fifty plus the other forty-five that were already...
Okay, well, I'd, I'd say 195, let's say 200. Yeah, I, I yield to Counselor Bennett, if he wants to add on that, too.
Well, I want to understand these, these numbers. The forty-five, they're sort of a when. When are these real number, when are they needed? That's what I don't quite understand. Is it, we need the forty-five sometime in the future at the Marion Parcade? And then this other 150? What would be of concern is if we built this and we sat there with a hundred empty, essentially empty parking spaces for twenty years or ten years. And that's what I'm trying to understand. That would look, and as the building slowly deteriorates, as we've experienced here, where you're starting to have issues even during the, the life of the building, that's what I want to understand. Is this for people that exist or people that are coming? I, I, I can't track it. I cannot figure out who's, who's who we're housing here in, in terms of at least their automobiles.
I think, I think we'll have to get back to you with a, with an accurate count of what parking is needed today. We have those figures, I just don't have them handy.
Well, let's say, let's just say for ten years. I mean, today and, and ten years from, for the foreseeable possibility that someone sitting here will vote for this thing and still be here when the police actually arrive to take the parking spot. That's the one that, it starts to worry me, where, you know what I mean? Mayor, I'm, I'm just concerned that we're not focused on this.
Oh, I think we've...
I am too.
...pobbled it together. I think if you give this one back to speed, I think this is speed.
And I, I think to add, to add to it, particularly when we have available, within 600 feet, a really less than, over you, well, a really adequate parking structure for the need we've got here, aside from the Christmas weekend. I mean, it really gets crowded down there. It would seem like we could finally, ultimately, as I think it was planned, use that Marion Parcade to its capacity, which is what we planned, I think, that previous council back in the seventies that came up with that building. They planned for it to be at capacity at some point, and we've never even seen capacity.
And as, excuse me, Chuck, but as an extra added bonus, we're getting 200 people who are paying for parking in that structure.
That's right.
You know, and that's, that, that's very helpful for the problems we have with the parking structures. Couple more questions, Mayor, if I may?
All right. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to jump to, Counselor Nanki had his hand up.
He's the president.
No, no, I'm not.
No, not anymore.
I'm nothing, I'm just a guy.
Just, just one of the...
You're just a civilian now, I mean, a regular soldier.
Well, when I look at staff from today to 2045, we're adding 73 people. So...
To 2045?
To 2045, the total number of everybody's changes 73. And if they all have a car, that's 73 people, 73 cars. So, and it's nice that we're looking at value engineering-type stuff, but it all comes down to what will the public be willing to pay? So, and we need to look at it from a couple of different perspectives. Polling data, do we have any that kind of says what? And when would that be expected?
We talked about polling.
What, what? Polling, to find out what?
Wasn't there one done in 2014?
That wasn't this kind of polling at all. City manager, do you have a comment about polling?
I, I don't have an answer for you tonight on, on when poll results would be available. I will have that information on when it would be available by, by the end of this week.
Okay. So we'll, we'll at least know about when we might do something by the time the public hearing rolls around, but we won't have any numbers?
Yes.
We had planned, we had planned for polling, just in a tentative drafting for polling to actually occur sometime in the month of February. So we're, we'll be a little bit behind on that, but not by very much.
Okay, were there other questions, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. This is for the architects. In the scoring that we went through when we talked about it earlier, you added, you had all these factors that we listed, and those are all very good and important factors. And in that, Site 13 scored 129, Site 2 scored 97. Could you give us the, the main reasons for that difference in, in 32 points?
I think, I think in, in reality, the O'Brien site, there were a little more, a few more givens on that site. We, we assumed that the, we could assume the cost factors fairly, in a fairly clear manner. The site, Site 2 was one of those sites that, at first glance, we really looked at that and said, this is going to be very costly. It's going to be costly to develop, to acquire. That really scored it difficult. That, that proximity, it exceeded the other sites, almost all of the other sites on proximity, and proximity to government services, of course. But, but the cost factor, I think, was, was a very, very important point there. Were there other points?
Wasn't one of the factors something about its location near residential neighborhoods, too, as opposed to not near residential neighborhoods?
Neighborhood compatibility, I think, was one as well.
I would presume that the Leslie Street site would score much less in neighborhood compatibility than the O'Brien Street side would.
Correct.
Well, it's right next to City Hall. What's wrong with that as a neighborhood?
Yeah, it goes, it goes...
Well, I'm the counselor for the ward right across the street on both sides, and you've got, you know, the, the plan has a four- or five-story building across the street from single-family residences. You know, I mean, that, you don't need to answer that. That's more of a comment than a question, and we can discuss that at some later point.
Right.
Then, I'm looking at the, you know, the slideshow you gave us. I guess it's not called slideshows anymore. The PowerPoint presentation you gave us, the penultimate page, if you could get to that, please.
The cost.
Do you have a number for penultimate?
Penultimate is, is next to the last. It's the second to last, yes. I'm speaking Latin again, Chuck.
Penultimate.
Yeah. Okay, now, as I look at that, I'm looking at number C, and I don't know if this is correct or not. Why do you have site and demolition construction? You have 110 stalls and 250 stalls. Is that, was that meant to be there?
Yeah, those are the on-grade stalls for both sites. Site 2 has the parking structure over, at the library parking structure accounted for that.
But then why is it listed opposite site and demolition construction? Site and demolition construction? I'm not sure what site demolition...
Site construction is considered parking lots.
Okay, so...
It's a larger site.
Okay, so are those two figures, B and C, supposed to be added together?
For, for total parking count onsite, correct?
Okay, 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 thank you. I'm also, and I guess this is a question for the chief, are the emergency operations now in the WVGC?
The Emergency Operations Center is in WVCC. Our Emergency Operations Group, if you're talking about our vehicles and equipment, they're scattered throughout the city.
Sure, no, I was talking about the site there. So has that caused problems for you in having the emergency operations there with the rest of the communications site?
No, it's been somewhat advantageous, I would say.
Okay, so that would be a reason to not include the emergency operations site in the, in the newly constructed site. I'm getting near the end, Mayor, thank you for your indulgence.
But that doesn't make, what you just said, I don't think is making sense.
Well, Jake in his presentation earlier said, we thought it would be better to have the emergency operations onsite with the police station as opposed to with the communications center. Yeah.
That was, that was really, that was really our, our professional opinion, based on the ability to use it more versidely as incident command or, or things of that nature. I don't know that we hold a strong opinion whether it should be included with WVCC if WVCC was to be built elsewhere or was to be considered elsewhere.
In light of, in, sorry, are you done? I didn't want to interrupt you. In light of the chief's just discussion that hasn't had any problems and it's somewhat beneficial, perhaps we could move that out of the, out of the, the site, too.
I think that the chief has a comment from that.
Yeah, I, I'm, it has not, it's been nice to have them there. I think it's very important to have the Emergency Operations Center in a secure, city-owned facility, which is why I believe we wanted it included in the police operation.
Thank you very much, Steve. And then I didn't quite understand your eliminate-growth option that you used here. Does that mean no growth at all, assuming the same number of police officers?
That's, that's, that's 100% correct.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, my last question for now, and it's, it's always a danger when a lawyer says, just a few more questions, or it's my last question. I'm a little confused as to the, when you talk about the cost for acquisition, they look about the same, but isn't there more of a problem with the, with the, the Leslie Street site? Because we've got many, many more parcels, which would potentially lead to many, many more potential delays where we can't reach an agreement and we have to do eminent domain or, or, you know, and is that, is that taken into consideration? Because it looks like the costs are the same, you say, for both sites.
I can take a, take a response at that. So you're correct that with the, with the larger number of parcels, the logistical issues increase. We did try to account for that, at least in terms of taking into account the onsite residences and businesses. And so we accounted for relocation costs for all of those impacted individuals as part of the number that you see there. So we tried to account for it as best we could.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
All right, Counselor Bennett, followed by Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I need to just hear a real, if you could help, help us out with this one, because I think it is a little bit difficult to kind of put together, is sort of a definitive statement or thought, or however you would do it, on the importance of the 911 center being there and also this emergency center. I think you've spoken to the emergency center, but I, I think there is a difficulty in understanding why, when we've got them housed in what appears to be, although none of us have ever, I don't know, I've never seen a secure location, why we need to move away from that right now. We've got 10,000 square feet going for it. It appears to be working. We're able to contract out a lot of costs to associated groups. I, I think it's just really important we really understand what's going on here and how, how and why this is at this site.
I'll do the best I can, Counselor. The Willamette Valley Communications Center is a regional 911 center for 29 police and fire agencies. The way it works, and I have Director Buckles here, if, if I misspeak and he can help me out. All of the people, all of the departments that are part of that pay a portion, dependent on their size, their population and their activity, into a fund that helps us run the operations and pay the, the lease on our 911 center. The Emergency Operations Center is really a City of Salem operation that's, that it happens to be housed in the 911 center. One of the main reasons is because they had a nice room that worked perfectly for it, quite frankly. But that is a City of Salem operation. The Emergency Operations Center would be used if there was a flood in Salem, an earthquake, a fire, a, a natural disaster, or some big operation where we needed the expertise of all the departments of the city. So they are, in, in some respects, two separate items. Prior to the 911 center being housed in where it currently is located, I believe the Emergency Operations Center was in the training room of the police department, which is extremely small. And, well, you've all seen it, and it is not a real viable place. But that is exactly where it was housed before. But that is exactly where it was housed before. You, I think you're asking, what is the importance of having the 911 center in the new police facility?
Well, that, the importance, Chief, and also kind of the, to some extent, to the extent you can answer it, and maybe others can too, is the, is the economics of it. Who's paying for this? Right now, we're sharing costs for the lease, and one of the concerns I've run into is sort of a, we're building it for everybody else, are, you know, are we going to be supported? Does this monthly fee include the payments made by the other jurisdictions? I mean, it's sort of, is it paying its way? Is it the right, should we be paying 292 bucks a square foot for it? That kind of stuff.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll try and answer that, because there's, there's a variety of variables. If we, let's say we did not include the 911 center, and someday we lost the lease and had to build a, a 911 center. One of the government, governmental agencies would probably have to go out for a bond to construct a 911 center. I think the estimates were eight to 10 million, or something in that respect.
Yeah, 10 and a half to 11.
So, one of the agencies, or one of the governmental entities would be on the hook for that bond. And because currently, it's a City of Salem 911 center that people contract with, my guess would be that it would probably fall upon us, but we, we can figure that out. Should the 911 center be included in the new police facility, it would be our understanding that all of the agencies would continue to pay rent, and continue to pay for the operations of the 911 center. Now, whether they would be paying for the construction of it, I seriously doubt that. It's a City of Salem facility, it's a City of Salem building, and, and if, at some point, we included the 911 center in it, and at some point they moved out, the City of Salem Police Department would utilize that space for their own good, or for expansion, or whatever it would be. So, I hope that answered your question. Mark, is there anything we can, that I could add there? And if you have questions, if that confused you, I'd be more than happy to try again.
No, it didn't. I, I kind of understand, I think. I, I guess the thing that concerns me, I'll just share it with you, is the immediate need seems somewhat resolved, just in terms of just the immediate time, and it's understanding this solves a long-term problem. But, is understanding too, the long-term viability of the City of Salem being the owner of this resource, of this space, a very expensive space, if the state of Oregon, as it has want to do, changes its strategy in terms of emergency communications, and the way they distribute emergency communications funds, or determines that there's going to be a different configuration of regions, and somehow, we end up on the short end of the stick, and, and the long end of the cost. You know what I mean? Does that, is that possible in this scenario?
Well, I think, and Mark may be able to address this better, I think several years ago, at the legislature, they discussed the fact that there were 55 or so PSAPs, 911 centers, in the state of Oregon, and if I remember correctly, the legislature, at that time, wanted to move it down to nine, six or nine?
Two proposals. 1719.
17 and 19. I think they, I don't know why they backed off that. My guess is that many local entities wanted to maintain some control over their 911 operations, and, and that may have been the case. In answer to your question, I never know what the legislature may do in the future, and I don't, I just mean that that's certainly a possibility. We are a fairly large regional center, the way we are now. I believe we have, or I should say, I believe the DLR group has put space into the, into the 911 center that would be built in the new facility to house additional...
That's correct, Chief.
So, it's possible that we could be on the short end of the stick. It's very possible that, in the future, because we are a successful regional 911 center, that we could be one of those that is tasked for additional operations.
Thank you, Chief.
Right, and just for clarity, in terms of the programming, that there was some growth of additional agencies into the, into the WVCC that were included in the, in the program assumptions. Does that take care of all sort of scenarios in the future? No, but it probably heads off a certain number of them.
Counselor Lewis.
Just to follow up on that, are we still spending $166,000 a year on the communications center?
172 is the lease we pay for the, for the building.
You know what, for me, at least it would be helpful if we could have at the public hearing, kind of a sense if it would be cost-effective to have that space in the new facility, and then, do we, do we make the cost of that space back, just that space, back, in the rent that we receive from the other participants, just for that specific space? And my other question is, and this, again, is just, just for my information, this has been thrown out quite a bit, but, land aside, could I ask you to give me what kind of police facility, under our circumstances, you could build for $30 million? If you could bring that back at the public hearing, I'd appreciate it.
Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mayor. And I was just actually running numbers off the 166 as well, and essentially, if you look at the deduction, which is about $6 million, if we just ripped the WVCC out by itself, it takes 86 years, at the 42% we're paying to equal that $6 million reduction. So, for a 30- or 40-year facility, it's about twice as costly to have it in the building as to not, depending on how one wants to look at it. But we're running close to, I, a question about special public hearing next week. What is the desired outcome, knowing that we still have a lot of questions, we don't know what the voters may or may not approve?
Right, the purpose of the public forum or public hearing that we'll have next week, which is the only item that we'll be covering next week, is simply for, to receive public input. We will, we will may have a staff presentation that describes what we know, and the facts, and where we are, and then, each person coming will have three minutes to testify. It's not thought of as a, it's not being planned as a time when we then will make a decision.
Okay.
That's, that's a ways out, yeah.
Falling off on that, Madam Mayor, will, will the council be able to ask questions of the staff? I mean, I know we can ask questions of the people who are testifying, but oftentimes...
Actually, we're going to set this up as a forum.
Okay.
And so, there'll be a staff presentation in the beginning, and there will be time to, to do that, and then, simply let people give their three minutes of presentation, is the way it's going to be set up.
So, at some later point, if we may, we'll be able to ask questions of staff, but not today?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
I presume this is an important enough issue in the community, that we're going to need to be there for a good, long time, so everybody can speak at these.
I think so, and I'm, I'm also cognizant that if, if it's, I, I don't want it to go past 10 o'clock, we all begin to get a little frayed, and, but if there are more people to testify, at that point, we'll go over to the next week...
Perfect.
...and have that, and we'll kind of see how many people are signed up. I think maybe our city manager has a comment?
We're, we're recording the questions that you're asking tonight. Certainly, if you have questions you weren't able to get to this evening, please send those to Alan's attention, so we can prepare for next Monday.
Okay, I have one question and comment about the WVW...
VCC.
Willamette Valley CC, in the facility and not in the facility. If my math is correct, by backing it out of the facility, which is on the last page of the staff report that's dated for the February 29th meeting, if you back it out, it's about $6 million. But if you build it standalone, it's about 10.5 to 11 million. So, we're going to have a choice to make, whether we're going to spend $6 million for the WVCC, or whether we're going to spend, what did we just say, 10.5 or 11 million? We're going to spend it one way or another, and we don't have to pay for it all ourselves anyway. I think we're splitting a lot of hairs over the, this WVCC, but I just want people to be really clear what we're talking about. $6 million included, 11 million not included. Yes, Counselor Benjamin?
Just to work off that as well, since, if we were to add this into the, the building structure, that means we're not paying rent at that point.
Sure.
And also, we're receiving income from the other jurisdictions.
Right, we, we receive that anyway.
Right.
Right.
But what I'm saying, if you factor that into the cost of the $6 million, well, what are we saving per year on rent, and what are we taking in? So that actually, to know how those numbers crunch down, I think is...
It almost comes up to that 40-year, it's a wash.
Yeah.
Right, right, good point.
Did we talk about the growth number?
Counselor Benjamin, I mean, Counselor Bennett.
Did we talk about the growth number? I apologize, Emily.
That's all right. Did we talk? A lot, a lot.
I asked a question earlier, but not, not while you were going out of the room.
Well, then, I, I didn't, I missed the answer, so can I ask the chief one more?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. One more, I'm sorry, Chief. I really want to understand your commitment, as chief of police, to this growth number, and why we're looking at 2.4, 2.5 over 1.8, sort of more like a historical growth number. Why, why would we do that? What, what, where are we headed here?
Well, I'll let Jake take a stab at that, but I will tell you, historically, I believe, for the last 40 years, or 40-some years of the Salem Police Department, the average growth was about 1.8 officers per year, for 40-some years, and I think that's, whether that was by accident, or whether that was planned, the 1.8 is a factor that I think we have seen statistically added to our police department for the last 40-some years. The 2.4, I believe, was a figure that the DLR group came up with, in their estimates of what they believed, over a 30-year period, the police department would need to meet the needs in 30 years out, but I would let Jake touch on that.
I want to check then on it, too. Then, is it based on that, we, we have a number, we're told, each budget cycle, of what we should have per thousand, and what we do have. Is it trying to achieve, then, that national average, or that target?
No, not, not at all.
Okay.
We used to, we used to utilize 1.5 officers per thousand, and if we did that today, we'd probably have to add 40, or...
Yeah.
Or 70, 70. So, several councils ago, and maybe you would have been included, we, we decided that that was just an arbitrary number, and that we would look instead at our operations, and how many officers we need to continue, to, to keep the city safe and protect it the way our council and our police department wants to. And so, we, there's no artificial number we're looking at. I think we're consistent in our staffing with the majority of Oregon, or maybe a little lower than the majority of Oregon police agencies.
One thing I'd ask for, then, Mayor, in advance of the next, of our public hearing, would be sort of a, bring that number in, I don't care if it's 1.8 or 2.4, but a strong recommendation on that number that fits within our, our historical reality. I mean, I'm, I'm looking at my experience on the Budget Committee for over 15 years, and I'm thinking about every, how hard it is to add a police officer or two. It's just been one tough thing to do, and I can't believe that's going to change over time, so I think it's getting a sense of a stronger, I don't know, just a more refined statement of what's really needed. Not that it's going to make a huge change, but I think, one of the things, I think, that would be, we, I just, it would help me a lot in this decision-making, to understand these better.
I just want to make sure I understand. Do you want to know, historically, what we've had, or do you want to know what I think we should have? Because they may be considerably different.
Well, I know historically what we've got. I think you've been real clear, too, about where we are. I mean, we're substantially short of any kind of certain models that are out there. But I would like to know what you think we should have, in terms of number of officers, and what you realistically think we can achieve, too. I mean, you, you've been down this road long enough to know the, the appetite for this community for paying for additional police officers, or the people they elect to pay for additional police officers. I'd really like to know your best thinking on this, it would help me a lot.
All right, I'll try and do that, thank you.
I think for my satisfaction, I would like to have a better understanding of whether we're going to build a facility that will last 30 years, or a facility that'll last 40 years. It seems like we're talking about construction of the same thing, but then, we say, well, then we'll just use this one, use it for 30 years, or whether we use it for 40 years, and that's, to me, seems to keep muddying the waters in trying to figure out the real cost and the capacity of the building.
Well, you, you had a, a report, Mayor, this, today, that we were looking at, from 1981, on what ought to be done here, to, to...
For citing a facility, yeah.
For dealing with our police space shortage. I mean, it, it has been that long since they, but they were looking at it even sooner, after the building was put up in '72. I think, and I just try to speak for the other counselors, I'm not sure I'm right, they'll correct me, I know, but, is, we don't want to have that happen again. We do not want, in 10 or 20 years, to be revis, forcing someone else to revisit this unprepared with a solution, if there's some, some sort of solution that can be worked out, that forces stalls, initial cost, you know, sort of pushes the costs out a little, but it's, it's really being ready for that 30 or 40 years, because these buildings do last 30 or 40 years, even in the condition City Hall's in.
45.
Yeah, here we are, 45.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can basically look at what we've built for the police 45 years ago, and look at it today?
Yeah, and would you like that again? You think your successor would like to be in the same spot you're in?
Yeah.
We don't want that to happen again.
Counselor Anderson, quickly, and then we're going.
Yes, I do. DLR folks, are you going to be here at the public hearing or not?
Yes.
Okay, and your recommended program, the, again, the penultimate piece of paper, you don't have one that would have the summary of the options. I mean, recommend the second program with reduction of the, of the WVCC, and reduction of the EE...
E, just EOC.
Something, something, EEOC.
EEOC is a little different program.
And the reduction of the, of the, of the officers from 2.4 to 1.8. I think that would be very helpful for the public to see those figures.
We have a similar breakdown for each of those categories.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you. We are adjourned, and we have a council meeting to go to.
Yeah, once you've been provided an opportunity, you can...
Yeah, yeah, EEOC. Of course, I know, and I wasn't too happy I was going to vote.
Good evening, I'd like to welcome you all to this evening's meeting of the Salem City Council and Urban Renewal Agency. We will begin with the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. Will the recorder please call a roll? Board Member Bennett?
Here.
Board Member Anderson?
President.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Benjamin?
Here.
Board Member Benards?
Here.
Board Member Lewis?
Here.
Chair Peterson?
Here.
Thank you. Will you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Member Bennett, I believe you are our council president pro tem this evening?
I am.
All right, welcome, and thank you.
All right, welcome, and thank you for serving in that role like old times.
Just like old times.
Just like old times.
Thank you.
Would you please move for approval of special meeting agenda and then the approval of additions and deletions?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the special meeting agenda for February 22nd for the Urban Renewal Agency.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Benards to approve the special meeting agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries, thank you. And a motion for the additions and deletions.
Madam Mayor, I move the additions to the agenda for the Urban Renewal Agency special meeting.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Benards to approve the additions, deletions, revisions to the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries, thank you. And we have no reports from boards or commissions. Is there any public comment this evening? No, all right. And we have a consent calendar. Member Bennett, will you please provide a motion for the consent calendar?
Madam Mayor, because this is a special meeting, we'll just run through each of them individually real quickly, if that's okay?
That's perfect.
Great, thank you. Madam Mayor, I move item 4.1.
Second.
Well, there's no minutes, never mind.
And there are no minutes.
In case they add something at the last minute, we've covered it, okay. We'll go to 4.3A. And Madam Mayor, I'll move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Benards, is that correct? All right. To move staff recommendation on item 4.3A. Member Bennett, would you like to describe that item for us?
You want to speak to it?
You go ahead.
Well, Madam Mayor, this adopts amendments to the various covenants, conditions, and restrictions, the CCNRs for properties in the Fairview Urban Renewal Area, and sets out a list of what the impact of that is. And I won't go through them, they're a little arcane, and so that's what it is.
All right, thank you. And it is provided in the staff report, in the agenda, and online. Counsel Anderson.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Speaking of arcane manners, I had asked to pull this item, not knowing that we'll look at it separately. I have some questions about the CCNRs, and if I may address them to staff.
Yes, all right.
My first one is, in the attachment two, which is the January 25th letter you sent to the property owners, you said the majority of Fairview Industrial Park is developed. I'm looking at the map here, and I also happen to ride my bike all the time on the industrial drive to get out of town. Doesn't look to me like there's much of anything left to be developed in that park.
I believe that there are one or two parcels left, smaller parcels.
And have any idea about what percentage of the whole area that would be? Not much.
No, it's a very minimal percentage of the overall acreage.
So then, I guess my other point is, this was, this Urban Renewal Agency has been in existence now for 32 years, and I think it's always kind of an occasion to celebrate when an urban renewal district is closed down. And it seems to me like we're moving in that direction, and perhaps you could speak to that.
Yes, that's correct. And this district is no longer correcting its tax increment revenue.
Okay.
We have not started the process of officially closing it down yet, though, because there's still approximately $2 million left on hand that...
To be spent in the area?
To be spent.
We'll use it for the incubator program, so it's a revolving loan.
Yes.
Okay. So that's really the only thing that's holding us up, is that we've got some money that could be spent in that area.
Correct.
So just hypothetically, what happens if we decide, if we close it down, even with that money, what, where does that money go?
If we were to close it down without spending that money, that money would then be returned to the other taxing districts. We'd return it to the tax.
Okay, so, and we would get whatever our percentage would be of the $2 million that is left there.
The city would, yes.
Okay. Then, just a couple of questions on attachment three. There's a bunch of amendments, and I'm looking at the actual Page 3, subsection 2.2, all the way down, and much of them are deleted in their entirety. And my assumption is, based on what you said, that they're being deleted because the city code has caught up with them.
That's correct. There have been revisions to city codes since this district was established that now address the issue.
So they're totally superfluous, which is why the Urban Renewal Agency shouldn't be in charge of that, but it should come to the council, because now those are really issues of code enforcement, as opposed to CCNRs under the Urban Renewal Agency.
That's correct.
I should quit while I'm ahead, then, because my assumptions have been right. And so I will quit. Thank you.
Go read that question.
And I think our city attorney has a comment in addition.
Just a clarification on the proceeds from the Urban Renewal Area. The state law does require that the proceeds be returned to the taxing jurisdictions pro rata portion. However, there are ways we can keep, the city can keep the money, even if the Urban Renewal Agency is closed, so long as that money is used consistent with the purposes of the plan, like we did with the Pringle URA a few years back.
So if that's the situation, then we potentially could close down the district and still keep the money?
Correct. However, we're stuck with whatever's in the plan at that point. So if there's a new program or a new project that comes along, the plan's already been closed, we have no opportunity to do that.
All right. You know, I just look and think we have six or seven, or maybe even more, urban renewal districts in town, and it would be kind of nice to get rid of some of them at some point.
Always. And that frees up more square footage.
That's exactly right. And then we don't, you know, we don't have the, the taxes can go every place, not just to the district. Thank you very much.
Right, but I would like to remind you that those urban renewal areas have many parts and dimensions in their plans, and even potential opportunities that we might not want to foreclose by closing an urban renewal too quickly, just thinking of the dollars, because we may lose an opportunity. And we have to remember, Fairview is next to our airport, and so there are other, some other relationships there.
That's entirely correct, Mayor, and I have every confidence in the staff that when they think the time is right to do this, we'll see something on our agenda.
Okay. Does that finish discussion on 4.3A, or are there further discussions? Member Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just, and I used to have it in my desk drawer, because Counsel Rogers used to always ask for it, as far as how much of our allotted potential square footage was tied up inside of urban renewal areas. And I think even with this out there, we still have a large percentage that we won't go over, I think 15%, is it?
As the 15% for the city, but as the new person here, I don't know what percentage we currently have within that.
Yeah, and even, because when we added in Mill Creek Corporate Center, that was a big chunk, and I think we're still only at like 11.
Yeah.
But, so, we don't necessarily need to close it down to free up to do some other work somewhere else, and as long as we can still be doing good things. All of the monies are being distributed out to all the taxing districts now, so it's kind of a moot thing, again, save for that last little bit that we've been using as a revolving loan set.
And if acreage really did come to be a push, you can also remove acreage from within an urban renewal area without actually closing the area.
And, yeah, but I think we're good.
Okay. All right. If there's no further discussion on item 4.3A, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. I would like to point out 4.3B, which is on the additions, deletions, and revisions, and that item is a West Salem Redevelopment Advisory Board appointment of Jeff Miller to fill the partial-at-large position expiring June 30th, 2017. So I would ask for a motion to approve that appointment.
So moved.
Second.
More second.
All right. It's been moved by Member Benards and seconded by Member Lewis. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. I didn't mean to be jumping over your work, Member Bennett.
I was just going to second your motion, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
That's always tough to get to.
Thank you very much. Okay. We have no information, reports, or special orders of business, and no public hearing for the Urban Renewal Agency. The Urban Renewal Agency meeting is adjourned. I'd like to call to order this evening's meeting of the Salem City Council for February 22nd, 2016. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Counsel Bennett?
Here.
Counsel Anderson?
Here.
Counsel Nanki?
Here.
Counsel McCoy is absent. Counsel Dickey?
Here.
Counsel Benjamin?
Here.
Counsel Benards?
Here.
Counsel Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here.
Thank you. Counsel Bennett, would you please provide a motion for approval to additions and deletions to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move approval of additions and deletions to the agenda.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Counsel Bennett and seconded by Counsel Benards is their discussion. Counsel Bennett, do you want to walk us through the additions?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The additions really focus on existing issues on the agenda, but there is additional information on the inter-guttenal agreement for the transfer of real property between the City of Salem and Salem-Kaiser School Districts. This deals with the kind of little parks that are at each of the schools that are also public, a public hearing that we continue dealing with the projected clock at the hospital, received some additional information from apparently the applicant, and we, yeah, that's the, that appears to be the sum and summary of it, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions regarding the additions? All right. It's been moved by Counsel Bennett and seconded by Counsel Benards. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. It's now time for council and city manager comment. Are there comments? Counsel Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to, if I may, take this opportunity, because I have heard from a number of my constituents about it, to mention to everyone here, as well as anyone watching the council meeting tonight, that next Monday, we'll have a special meeting devoted solely to a public discussion, a hearing on the proposed new police facility, its location, and its scope, its cost, its size, the whole issue. It'll start at 6:30 here in the council chambers, and just want to make sure people are well aware of that, at least through this venue.
Great, thank you. Counsel Anderson.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I want to first give a little information item, and then I want to move on to two things that are, oh, disheartening and very much discouraging and deplorable. The information item is that I will not be at the next city council meeting, and I have asked that Maren Rinn, who is very active in the Neska neighborhood, be appointed and has been as the guest counselor. Ms. Rinn is here today, and she's been coming very assuadably to the last several council meetings, and I know you will welcome her when she comes. So, thank you, Maren, for doing this for me. The thing that's a little discouraging is something that I've spoken about before, but I have not spoken about it in Ms. Rutherford's tenure, and that concerns the Georgia Pacific South Block development and access to the river. There's been quite a...
Boise Cascade.
Boise Cascade, excuse me.
Sure, Georgia Pacific.
Yeah, yeah.
The Koch brothers, okay.
Yes, yes. I stand corrected, the Boise Cascade, there's, the city has, it's a lovely development, and it's looking very good, and it's bringing more people to downtown, all of which are good things. But there has been this kind of ongoing issue about how do people get from Mirror Pond and down to the river, which is what we're emphasizing, especially with the, you know, the Peter Courtney Bridge. That would be a lovely little place to walk, and the path access on the south side of the river is blocked off and has been blocked off for some time. And I've raised this issue in the past, and the answer has been, well, we think since there are going to be office buildings, that, boy, you know, maybe it will be, our office space, maybe it will be open. But I'd like some sort of definitive answer at some point in the future, is why, with everything that we've helped the developers with, why that path can't be open? Because if you look at the north side, we may have an easement there, but that's real problematic with the concrete and everything else. So I'd be curious as to some report at some point in the future. And finally, this is the disheartening and discouraging thing, which is that we have another pedestrian death. And this particular woman was 68 years old, her name is Olivia M. Stroop. She was crossing on 25th Street near the post office in a marked crosswalk with an island in the middle. And on February 13th at 6:25, when it was still relatively light outside, she was hit by a car. I commend the police department for their prompt investigation of this, and it's resulted in several charges. But I did note from the, either police report or the newspaper report, that this is a 25 mile an hour zone, and the driver says, I think I was going 35. And we all know from practical experience, that means they were going faster than 35. If, at least my experience, every time I stop by an officer and ask how I'm going, I never, I always have a different estimate than I think the officer has. So this again points to me the problem we have and we continually have here, and, you know, it's a matter of speed, which is the real issue, and we've had discussions about this in the past, and 25 is actually pretty good for that space, but maybe 20 might have even been better. And it again, to me, points out the necessity of really working on this issue. And at some meeting in the future, I will be presenting a council motion that the city investigate, look into, adopt whether we can adopt the Vision Zero Plan that has been adopted by many other cities. So I'm extremely sorry for the death of Olivia Stroop and for her family.
Thank you, Counsel Anderson. Counsel Benards?
I just wanted to bring people up on the Homeless Initiative Task Force met last week. It was a good, in fact, it was an overwhelming turnout. We had it in the Anderson room in the basement of the library, and it was filled to capacity, and then some, there were people standing. That's how much attention that task force has gained and the issue has gained in our community. I suspect we will not be holding the next meeting in that location, because we'll make room for the additional individuals. But that decision has yet to be made, I think, at this point. Our next...
We are definitely going to move to a larger space.
Excellent. And then I wanted to also say that the next meeting of that task force will be on March 29th, wherever it might be meeting. But this, the first one was just basically an orientation, had some great presentations from HUD, talked about the different programs that are out there at this point. Anyway, just, it was a good conversation, and you get some good people working on some issues there, so.
Great.
Thank you. I don't know if you had anything to add?
Thank you. No, I thought that the meeting went well, and I was very, very pleased with the community turnout. Thank you. Counsel Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was at an event this weekend, and I tried to get some information, excuse me, off of our website for open boards and commissions slots, to try to encourage people to fill them. And so I didn't know where the tab was, and this may be able to be fixed with the website. Plus, tonight, we have a lot of appointments on it as well. So I just did a search for boards and commissions, and first went up, current openings. Clicked her, printed her out, getting ready to go, it says, contact Linda Kate, date So then I went back in and dug a little deeper and got the more current list, but I don't know how we have old stuff able to populate up to first choice as well. So as soon as we get that updated after tonight, I'd like to have somebody give me a holler when it's updated to where I can, you know, pass that along and try to get people to turn in applications to fill some of those positions.
Right. We are actively recruiting for boards and commissions all the time, because all the time, people come on and go off, and sometimes cycle off on their regular cycle-off date, and sometimes people move, et cetera. But we do have an up-to-date list for that, and we manage that. But we do have an up-to-date list for that and we manage that through my office and we also have everyone on the committee notified of openings, et cetera. So I apologize that that's on there that way.
It was after 5 o'clock on Friday, so there's no one I could really ask for it, so I was hoping the website would give me what I needed and it was-
It didn't. I'm sorry. I don't know what that is.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Just something we want to look at. Because if a counselor can be confused on it, I know everybody else can as well.
Absolutely. Counselor Ben Arz, I think you have a comment?
I just wanted to address that. I'm on the committee. And I too had looked through and a week ago, we had 33 openings on the boards and commissions. I think today we have less than 20, that after tonight, we'll be appointing quite a few people and that'll take care of. But the list that's there should specifically say what is available as of today. There should only be 20 there. And then a report was put together by the mayor's office, as she said, and it went out, at least to the committee members. I don't know if it could go out to the members at large within the council.
I'm not sure if it goes to the entire council or if it goes to the committee.
I think it just goes to the committee.
We'll find out.
Yeah.
It should go.
But it not only tells you what's vacant, but it tells you the requirements, because there are quite a few of these that have residency requirements or vocation requirements that you need to fill.
Yeah, because when I got to the actual place where the current, current list is and printed it all out, there was like for term ending, December 31st, 2015. So it's like, has it been vacant for a couple of months? And that's still the open one as well? So I just want to make sure I have a good list. It's clean that we get out to people.
Right. And that may be the case, particularly if the qualification is a unique one. We actually sometimes have to really go out there and look for a person who happens to fit those exact criteria.
And it's always tough having them expire at the end of the year when we're going into short meeting sets and everything else, so we may want to look at that.
Well, we did a lot, we did a lot of appointments in December.
You mean their terms expire, not the people expire?
Yeah, right. Okay. All right. Is that any more council comment? Okay. And do we have comment from our city manager, Steve Powers? Nothing this evening. All right. Okay, we're going to move along. We have a proclamation that's a fun one. We started this last year. And Fred Neal will join me up here with his staff.
Whoops. Is this right?
No, use the other, use the civilian.
We did a cherry blossom song. There we go.
We put those barriers up for security. I'm not sure, Allison, what a difference they're going to make, but there they are. Fred, it's a delight to have you back with us in the chambers and to again have this time to talk about Cherry Blossom Festival. So I'm going to read the proclamation and then ask Fred to say a few words. Whereas the cherry tree is an essential part of the city of Salem's history, culture, environment, and economy. And whereas Salem's first cherry festival was held in 1903 with a three-day celebration, including the Queen's coronation and many other activities, including industrial displays and exhibits of cherries arranged in booths along Court Street. Whereas in 1907, the Pacific Coast Association of Nurserymen adopted a resolution declaring Salem to have the greatest and finest display of cherries known in history. And by unanimous vote, christened Salem the Cherry City. Whereas in 1913, the Salem Cherians Organization was established to host an annual Blossom Day. And whereas in 1986, the city of Salem and Kaoko City, Japan, entered into a sister-city relationship to strengthen the bonds between our cities. Whereas the cherry blossom has been a symbol of Japanese culture since time immemorial and is also symbolic of our Cherry City, Salem, Oregon. Whereas in 1992, more than 150 flowering cherry trees were planted on the Capitol Mall in keeping with Salem's history with cherry trees. And whereas residents and visitors enjoy strolling under the cherry trees in the Capitol Mall, admiring the blossoms and observing the history recorded on the stone pavers. Whereas the significance of cherry trees in Salem has had a long and fruitful history, therefore I, Anna Peterson, Mayor of the city of Salem, hereby proclaim March 19, 2016, to be Cherry Blossom Day for Salem and encourage all residents and visitors to join in this observation. Fred, we are very excited again to recognize Cherry Blossom Day and the cherry blossoms and the Oregon State Capitol Foundation. You are the chair. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. It's a pleasure to present you hot off the press, Cherry Blossom Day posters. There'll be more coming your way.
Thank you. Let's hold that up and have a photo of that. And here's our proclamation as well.
The role of the Oregon State Capitol Foundation is to preserve and protect the Capitol building and its grounds, to preserve and convey to the public the history that's made in the Capitol and the environs, and to enrich the cultural experience of visitors to the Capitol and of course, to the Capitol city. And we believe that this Cherry Blossom Day is a celebration of our partnership with the city of Salem and with cognizance of the importance, important contribution our Japanese-American citizens have given to this state, that this will be a beautiful, beautiful day to celebrate from 10 to 2, Saturday, March 19th. And everyone is welcome. It'll be exciting.
Thank you. And it's open to the public and it's free?
Absolutely.
We want to tell people that too. So I'm very honored to present to you the proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Fred. Thank you.
[applause]
Does staff email me the appointment calendar and that?
We will.
Sorry, if I make sure.
You want one of these for your locker? Is this one for your locker here at City Hall?
I can take it to work.
Take it to work. There you go. All right. We have a very special guest in the chambers this evening for a very special presentation and it's my honor and privilege and delight to introduce the Polk County Sheriff, Sheriff Mark Garten, and he's going to make a presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. I really do appreciate the opportunity to come here and talk to everyone, introduce myself. I'm kind of new to the job. It's only been about three months, so I am trying to create a different vision for our office and be more connected to all the communities, Polk County on this side, all the way over to the coast, essentially. So I'm trying to do what I can. Are those supposed to be on?
And then we'll boot.
Okay.
So if we're staring at it, we're really just reading the atmosphere?
Okay.
That's when we close it. Just rebooting.
Oh, they're rebooting. Okay, well, I'll just, I'll just talk. Back in May, the voters of Polk County approved a public safety levy, which I'm very thankful for and I know this council was supportive of. And so part of what I wanted to talk about tonight is the things that we're doing to show essentially the return on some of the investments that have already been made. And part of that, January 9th, we went back to 20 hours of patrol versus 10 hours. And that's our first kind of phase that we're doing and by July, we're going to be back to 24/7. So that's... Yep. Gotcha. At the same time, in July, we're also going to be reactivating our drug team, our inter-agency drug team, that we did a lot of work in West Salem, unfortunately, but that is going to be back and going as well. The public safety levy allowed us to hire 12 patrolled deputies and five in the jail to be able to maintain what we're doing. We've already hired 12 and then we're actually hiring a couple, two more. We've had somebody leave and then we're hiring for my position, which is my original position, which is weird to hire for myself. So we're hiring three more in the jail as well. And so we had five retirements at the same time as the public safety levy passed, so we were hurting pretty, pretty bad in our jail as well. The jail, and I hope everybody understands that it really is a deterrent for people across the river. We pride ourselves in it. We don't try to have a revolving door and that is something that the citizens of the county really do need to understand and appreciate, what it really means to everybody, Everybody Day citizens, police as well. Last week, I started a sheriff's advisory team and part of that is trying to get that connection again between, between me and the citizens from all throughout the county. I've started the team with five people that have been recommended to me and that five, those five people will pick the additional four that will make up the team. And so I want to be able to have a good representation from all over the county. I have two from West Salem already and so, one from inside the city and one from just out in the urban growth boundary. And so I'm looking for four more individuals. I'm currently accepting applications for that. So any of that can be found on our website. I think it's, it's never been done in our office before, so it's something that I'm trying to figure out the best way to make it work and citizen involvement is really the only way that we're successful. I don't always know everything. That's, I don't, I don't want to have that. I want to be able to have people come to me and give suggestions and ideas about ways that we can serve the public, so. When I took office too, we, we made a vision statement. We've never had one of these and everything that we do has to pass muster of the statement. And so whatever decision that is made or recommended, if it doesn't, if it doesn't pass this, we don't do it. And this is the purpose of our office, is to provide sustainable quality programs and services that focus on the safety and security of our schools, homes, businesses, and highways, which contribute to the quality of life for every segment of our community. And I really do, I really do mean that and I'm born and raised in Polk County and so I've never had a job outside Polk County. And so it really does mean a lot to me. And so we need to provide the right services. If we're not providing the service, we need to be able, to be told to do this or we don't need to do it if it's not effective. So that is part of my, my goal is to make sure that we are providing the effective law enforcement services that you guys deserve. I welcome any of you to contact me for any reason, my email, phone number. There's a direct link on our website to me. If you have any questions or concerns or comments about West Salem or anything that we're doing, I want to know. I really do just, I need that connection. Without the citizens' involvement, we're not going to be successful. So that's us in a nutshell. It's pretty quick, but there's a lot more things that are coming that we're, that we're really striving for and that will be coming through from, within the next few months. But this is where we're at right now. So, does anybody have any questions? I'd be open for questions or comments.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from counselors? Well, I would like to say thank you so much for the work that you do and that you're bringing to not only Polk County, but to the community at large and to the state, to the Sheriff's Association statewide, which I know you're a part of. We have been enjoying in Salem a wonderful relationship with Polk County and with our Polk County Sheriff's Office. And I want to say, just for the public's information, yes, your deputies generally are patrolling outside of our city limits, but your jail services our city limits as specific to West Salem and does have a wonderful reputation of always having a bed ready, it seems, so we appreciate that. And also then the probation and parole supervision that you provide. And that is too for people who are on probation and parole that are in West Salem. Is that correct?
Yeah, throughout. I mean, we have so many overlapping services that sometimes people don't realize, you know, that the services that they actually are getting, but they just can't see. And so it's important for everybody to figure, to understand that and be open to that idea, so.
Great. Thank you. Well, we're very pleased with the hiring you've been doing. Counselors, Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, Sheriff Breton, I want to thank you for your outreach and your hard work over the last few months and congratulations on your election. But I want to appreciate the work that you've put in over the months. It's appreciated by the folks in West Salem, I know.
Appreciate that. My wife will hopefully understand that at some point. But we're, I'm busy, so.
You're absolutely busy. Counselor Ben Arz, did you have your hand up?
No.
No? All right. Well, again, thank you. You're always welcome.
All right, thank you.
All right. It's now time for public comment and I wonder if someone has signed up? Okay, all right. We have Angie Morris from Travel Salem and John Christensen. So Ms. Morris, there you are. Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
And I see that you provided a, an annual report to us. Anyway, I have it. Does everybody have a copy? Okay.
Do you want me to start?
Yes. You're, you're ready to roll.
Okay.
You might want to really pull that microphone down and-
Okay.
...speak right into it.
Okay, I'll do that. I can project. Okay, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm Angie Morris, President and CEO of Travel Salem, and I'm going to launch right into our 14-15 annual report. Estimated economic impact for 2014 was at a record high of more than half a billion dollars with roughly 2,500 direct tourism jobs. TOT was at a 16% increase over the previous year and the highest level on record. Travel Salem's influence on the TOT was roughly $1.6 million. All of our funding sources across the board were increased 30%, including both public and private sources. These additional resources supported the creation of two new programs, destination development and sports marketing. Let's talk about destination development for a second. The Salem Greeters Program was launched last year. It was the 100th program in the world and only the fourth program in the U.S. Salem Greeters is a global program that features local residents as tour guides. Salem Greeters has hosted worldwide visitors as well as a tour operator from California that wants to bring folks here for the 2017 Eclipse. Let's talk a little bit about sports and recreation. Travel Salem attended teams in Las Vegas, securing 15 RFPs and booking two events so far. We attended the National Association of Sports Commissions in Wisconsin, securing one RFP and booking, I'm sorry, 13 RFPs and booking three events so far. This is the first time Travel Salem has been able to attend these two business recruitment conventions. We partnered with Hoopla and the Hampton Inn and Suites to grow Salem's event. We marketed Hoopla to 8,000 teams participating in Spokane's Hoop Fest. The results were impressive. Salem's event grew 6% with a 10% increase in out-of-area teams. These are some new events we secured last year as well. Jiu-Jitsu, water polo, ultimate frisbee, national soccer tour. And I'd like to do a brief update on where we are so far this year as well. We're preparing to launch a new online video campaign called Salem Like a Local. Our new website is almost ready to go live, including a new booking engine. We attended a New York Public Relations trip where we pitched our destination to top editors. We're just finishing up six new cycling trails. We'll be marketing this new product throughout a variety of print and online media. We're also putting the finishing touches on a new wine, garden, and waterfall tour in partnership with Amtrak and Grayline. It will be the first bookable product of its kind in our market. Travel Salem has received Wine Country License Plate funding to market Region One. I've included a copy of the marketing plan in your packet tonight so you can get a feel for the exciting products underway. We are working on marketing the 2017 Eclipse. We anticipate between 30,000 and 50,000 Eclipse chasers in Salem for this global event. And here are a few highlights of the business, business we've been able to secure so far already this year. And lastly, we just finished hosting the Quidditch Championships here in Salem. This was another first-time event for Salem. On behalf of Travel Salem's Board of Directors, staff, and hospitality industry, some of whom are here in this room with us today, we want to express our appreciation for Salem's commitment and vision to tourism economic development. Thanks for all that you do. Thanks for having me here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions? Counselor Bennett, then Counselor Ben Arz, then Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a really good report this year, Angie. It really is impressive and particularly the growth in our top revenue. And I know we'll all be talking about that further as time passes, but, but before we get to the messy discussion of money, this cycling trail thing is so impressive. I'm really excited about that. I think as we bring on the new bridge and the full 26 miles is opened up in a continuous fashion, coupled with everything else out there, I'm so glad to see you doing, I've heard about this from cyclists, that they're very excited about it. And then the other one that I keep hearing about, and I, I'll tell you, it eluded me for quite a while, was the Eclipse and how we're going to deal with, would you say, 30 to 50,000 people? I, you know, I assume that everyone with an empty bedroom has been contacted at this point. How will we accommodate this? How is, how are you guys doing that? What's that look like?
Yeah, that's, thank you for the comments and question, Counselor Bennett. The Eclipse, you know, it's a ways out. I mean, it's not until 2017, August of 2017, so a lot of folks are kind of like, gosh, you guys are really pushing this quite ahead of time. But we have done a ton of research on- They experienced 50,000 folks on the ground, and they weren't quite prepared for that, so it caused their community quite a bit of challenge. And so, we're trying to get ahead of that here. We've had multiple meetings, eclipse meetings, where we're bringing our stakeholders together. We've met with the City of Salem in a number of different capacities to talk about what the infrastructure looks like for hosting those, that kind of volume. Our hoteliers are already booked for that period of time. And then, how we're gonna, the kind of viewing parties that are going to be hosted during the eclipse, where those are going to occur. We really want visitors to have an amazing experience on the ground here, and hopefully come back for another, another time. So, we're really trying to rally the community around what the impact of this looks like, from everything to, you know, do we have the lights in Riverfront Park stay dimmed, even when all the lights, you know, it's dark outside, so that people can really still see the eclipse? Or, you know, where are people going to park? And, and are they're going to be camping and viewing locations on top of parades, which I talked to Kristin about the other day? So, we're trying to get ahead of this, but we've really done a huge call-out to our partners, because Travel Salem's not producing any events, but a lot of the tour operators, packaged tour operators, who are looking to bring groups into town for this, need bookable products. So, if somebody's planning an event, we need to know about that, so we can fold it into, to how we're selling this destination during that time. But, it's going to be a challenge, but we're, we're, we're on it, so to speak.
Well, I, I'm really looking forward to it. I, you're, some of your descriptions of the infrastructure things will be really interesting. I know the staff will respond as quickly and as appropriately as possible. I hate to see those lights come on during the day. That would be really unfortunate. The other is, is will this be part of your discussion with us during the budget cycle on investment of some of those top funds? That we work with you guys in your strategy for developing how you're going to deal with this as we talk about those top funds? Because it sounds like a really big project.
It is a big project, yes.
And one that we need to, I think, understand your resources and your capacity, what you're going to need to do to deal with this. So, I hope you'll take a close look at that.
Oh, thank you for that.
And as you approach us, approach us with that kind of program in mind.
Certainly in partnership with you. Absolutely, yeah. Thank you.
Let's see, were there other questions? Counselor Bednarz, and then Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Angie, for coming here. Last year was a considerable amount of discussion in the budgeting process about a website, as I remember, and the analytics that you have on page 11 show only for 1415 and 1314. So, how are things going? Did we get the webs, did you get the website that you wanted? Is it, is it getting more hits? Is traffic up? What's going on?
We are planning to roll out the new website probably around April. It's got a lot, I mean, it's a full refresh. So, not only the look and feel of the site, how, how visitors move around in the site, but the, the infrastructure and data behind that engine is all being redone. We are putting in place a new booking engine, so visitors can book product directly on our site. It has a whole analytic engine to that, and how we're able to manage the data and respond via social media and other things. It's going to plug into our entire system, so we're getting ready to roll that out. It's going to be very exciting, very powerful, very excited about it. So, I'm not able to share that with you right now, but it is, the funding that we have for that, it's going to play out in the next couple of months, so.
So, I, I thought it would be out much sooner than this. I didn't know how long it takes to take, to launch a website like that, but.
Yeah.
Count on next year a question about the website and how it's worked, and those, the automatic bookings that you can get into, and all the things that we had talked about in the last budgetary cycle. The advantages of spending that, I think it was about $35,000 on that, was it?
It was 30.
30,000. Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you very much. This is a terrific product, Angie, and I want to amplify what Counselor Bennett said about the bicycling. As a biker myself, I will tell you that the folks that will be attracted to this are going to be people who have a lot of disposable income. They're going to be in the, in the prime spending part of their lives, and having ridden many of the routes you're talking about, I know that it's a, it's a wonderful mix, because we've got the ferries here, we have covered bridges, we have the wineries, but what also is very important is we've got flat places and hilly places. So, you know, a ride I do often is independents, down river road independents, up to the Wheatland Ferry and across, and that's relatively a flat ride, but you can also do rides here that are very un-flat, shall we say. So, I think this is a terrific idea, and I hope to see you, I know it'll be success now, and it'll be continued to be successful, and I'm sure you'll end up with even more routes.
Thank you. May I comment for just a moment?
Yes, just for a minute, because we're kind of watching time.
So, the cycling routes, I'm really happy that both of you have commented on that, because it is really important product that we did not have before in a marketable fashion. A couple of years ago, we had gotten the opportunity to bid on a cycling event, and that event organizer needed all kinds of infrastructure in place. They needed distances, elevations, you know, all of that. And we didn't have that packaged up, but Eugene did, and Eugene got that event. So, we were at that time, we're like, we really are at a disadvantage. We need to create this product. And so, the destination development arm has really worked hard to do that, and we're going to plug those, I mean, we're going to have two tours in Salem, two in Marion County, and two in Polk County. And we're really excited about where that will go and the legs it'll have. So, thank you for the support, truly.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming, and appreciate all the work being done by you. And I believe you have a board member or two here. Would you like to introduce them?
Oh, thank you for that opportunity. I'd love to. We have Jim Rasmussen, who's our vice chair on our board. Jim Rasmussen with Modern Building Systems. Toby Olson with Hampton Inn and Suites. We have Jake Bryant with the Best Western Mill Creek Plus Inn, and let's see, Scott Snyder, who's with Sala and the Grand Hotel, and Gus, oh my gosh, Gus Castaneda with the Red Line Hotel. And so, lots of folks showed up tonight to show their support for what the city has done to really support the tourism industry in our community. So, thank you again.
Great. Welcome. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, board members, for coming. We appreciate the volunteer time that you spend on it. Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Christensen, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Friday, first of all, for the record, John Christensen, I live in south-central Salem, Ward 2. On Friday, I became aware that of a, this is, the comments related to Agenda Item 3.3B, which is the proposed inter-agency agreement between the school district and the City of Salem. What that does, in fact, is relinquish title to specific areas and parks in the City of Salem. One of those parks is in the neighborhood that I live, which is near McKinley. And for the last 40 years, we've had a neighborhood park there. This agreement eliminates the city park in that space. For the last three years, I've been co-chair of the Parks Committee in the SCAN neighborhood. And we worked on the Crooked House Playground rebuild, a SPIF grant, which I think folks here know about, the SPIF grant program. And then, we worked for three, or also three years to put in a drinking fountain for the users of the McKinley Park area. Drinking fountains, this particular drinking fountain cost about $12,000. So, don't assume that these things are inexpensive. The Crooked House Playground, when we worked with the city staff, we were projecting maybe 50, 50,000. And when we talked to staff, they said, nope, we want you to have rubberized tile pavement. And we said, okay, how much? It came up to 85,000 more. And in the process, I've learned a lot about the grant structures and funding structures. And this proposal takes, it takes the lottery fund away from these parks, or these public spaces, or, or play spaces. It takes SPIF away from that process. It takes the land and water fund, federal monies, away from that process. When I went through grant foundations to see who would give money for a water fountain, we actually had three foundations that came in on it to help with the $12,000. A lot of them don't give to school districts. They assume that capital improvements for these type of spaces should be handled through the standard school district process and budgets. And they specifically say that in the guidelines. I've gone through books related to grants.
I'm sorry, I have to draw your attention. The three minutes is up. Can you wrap up?
Yes, ma'am. I'd be pleased to. What I'd like to bring to your attention is that this is going to shift not only the title, but the source of resources that are available at the grassroots level and at the local level for these parks. And it's significant because, sorry, Madam Mayor, but when we tried to get a fountain, folks have wanted a fountain for 20 years at McKinley, at the McKinley Park.
I am going to ask you to stop.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, three minutes. Are there questions from councilors? Counselor Benjamin?
Wouldn't this open other avenues?
Pardon me, sir?
Wouldn't this open other avenues for grants that were currently, that were unobtainable before?
I've worked with grants for 45 years, off and on, and I think it diminishes it. I think it diminishes it. I don't think it opens it. I think it closes it down, because the way, you're probably a businessman, in business, you leverage. This, somebody comes up, somebody else comes up, somebody else comes up, somebody else comes up. You start with a SPIF, then somebody says, I'll jump on board. That's what happens when you're raising money at that, that level.
Right, but I mean, for, because it'll switch ownership, if you will, or, or a different entity that's not capable of taking advantage of the SPIFs that you know of now.
Who isn't?
It may open other granting resources.
Sir, I'm just giving you my professional experience. I've dealt with millions of dollars. I don't believe so, and that's why I came to know.
So, there's not other funding sources on a different grand scale?
Not at the same level. Because what the, the, I'm glad, thank you for the opportunity. In 1998, the people of Oregon set aside 15% of the lottery proceeds for outdoor recreation and for natural habitat and things like that. That funds up to a million dollars in single grants to local governments. School districts are not eligible for those monies.
Are they eligible for other things, though?
Okay. I'm just telling you.
I have a couple other councilors with questions. I see Counselor Lewis has his hand up, and then Counselor Anderson.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Christen, for coming. I.
Thank you, sir.
Just looking at the staff report, it looks like this is currently used for, by the school for a playfield, and that's the anticipation for the continued use. Would you agree with that, or?
If you look at the map, part of it is a park, part of it is a play area. It's a cooperative thing that goes on, and if you look at the comprehensive parks plan, it runs, part of the day, it's used by the school, but part of the day, it is not. Candelaria, for example, has, has had their sack, excuse me, their soccer team practice there in the afternoon. There's baseball, that's recreational baseball that's occurred there. On weekends, there's been a bike rodeo, for example. I'm just trying to respond. It has been a, a neighborhood park, as well as a school grounds. And it was actually created by, if I can claim a little bit of credit, it was created by SCAN following a court case. It was to be a parking lot, and SCAN took the city to court, then they went and got model city funds from the federal government. The city said, okay, you can use the streets, and we created a neighborhood park. It's, it's got a unique history.
All right, thanks. Is, does that, is that the end of your question, Counselor Lewis?
Yep.
All right, Counselor Anderson?
I don't have a question, just a comment, and that is that I asked to have this pulled, and I understand some other councilors would have done it had I not done it. So, I think we can have a fuller discussion with the staff when we pull this from the consent calendar.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mayor, thank you for the time.
Appreciate you coming. Thank you. All right. I didn't see anyone else signed up. Was there anyone else in the council chambers who had wanted to provide testimony at this point? All right, we will now move along to the consent calendar. Counselor Bennett, will you please provide a motion for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'm going to move the consent calendar with the following corrections and polls. First correction in the minutes of the February 8 meeting, the, trying to figure out which section this was. There was a motion to approve the consent calendar with a poll, 3.3B and C by Counselor Bennett. It also lists Counselor Lewis. He would not like to be listed on that one, so we'll pull his name off that. He was not the maker of the motion. Then, 3.3, 3.3B, polled by Counselor Anderson. And that's it.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett, and seconded by Counselor Nanki to move the consent calendar for adoption, with the exception of the noting the correction needed in the minutes of February 8, and also pulling Item 3.3B, as in boy, for consideration under, discussion under special orders of business. Counselor Bennett, would you like to describe anything further with regard to the consent calendar items?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'll just run through them very quickly. 3.3A authorizes the connections of city water and sewer to a specific parcel of land outside the city limits on Boone Road in Counselor Nanki's Ward. There, it's conditioned on the property owner's consent to annexation, and sets up a timeframe for that annexation. 3.3C is the discussion we had earlier on the covenants, conditions, and restrictions being taken over by the city council at the Fairview Urban Renewal Area. And we know, all know now what that means. Appointment, the D is appointments to the Citizens Advisory Traffic Commission, Community Police Review Board, Salem Cultural and Tourism Promotion Advisory Board, Salem Public Art Commission, Salem Urban Development Community Services, and Housing Commission. Counselor Bednarz outlined the impact of this earlier in our meeting. E is the actions taken by the council's legislative subcommittee on some legislation as it's moving through this current session of the legislature. And that's it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. We will proceed to the public hearing of Item 4A. It's a continuation of a hearing. Would the city recorder please introduce the hearing?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of hearing an appeal of the hearing's officer decision denying an application for a sign variance for property located at 939 Oak Street Southeast. The criteria applicable to this application are Salem Revised Code Section 900.040D. The hearing will be conducted with a staff presentation first, followed by the applicant, neighborhood association, and other interested persons, and applicant's rebuttal. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the hearing in person or in writing, or failure to provide statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to provide the applicant and the city council an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, or LUBA, on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Following the close of the public hearing, a decision will be issued and mailed to the appellant, applicant, property owner, affected neighborhood associations, anyone who participated in the hearing either in person or in writing, and anyone who requested to receive notice of the decision.
Thank you very much. And we have a staff report. Counselor Bennett, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate it. Madam Mayor, I want to inform the council of two ex parte contacts that occurred with me by email. I didn't read the emails. Forwarded them to the city attorney, and they're appearing in your additions tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Welcome. We have a staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilors. I'm Amy Dixon, City of Salem Pl...
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilors. I'm Amy Dixon, City of Salem planning. I'd like to enter the staff report and all of its attachments and all the additions that were submitted as part of the record. This variance is not about the size or the location. It's only about the illumination of the sign. A request for a variance was received on October 21st and was deemed complete shortly after. The following public hearing, the hearings officer issued a decision denying the request. On July 11th, council initiated a review of the application. A request for a variance was received on October, or Salem, sorry. Salem Hospital requested a variance and a, and a sign permit to allow a non-illuminated emergency, non-emergency illuminated wall sign, a clock on an existing building, Building D, which houses the educational program and the birthing center. It's 75 feet above the ground. It has been installed, but not currently illuminated. The portion of this, of the campus is own public and private health, or PH zone, and only allows emergency signs to be illuminated. The purpose of this restriction is to ensure that the public is able to find their way to the correct locations within the hospital campus in an emergency. This here is the zoning map. Those Salem Hospital campus is made up of PH, public and health, and private education, commercial office, with the portion, with the portion with this proposed sign as PH zone. This is an aerial picture. The sign faces into the campus. The sign is only visible to the people off-campus in the southeast portion of the property. Busch Park, Deepwood, an office building at the corner of University and Mission. Due to the height of the surrounding buildings and the location of the, the sign in this building, it's hid from most of the other locations to the north and to the west and southwest portion. Here is a picture at Mission Street and Capitol. And as you can see, it's the indication of where the existing sign is located. This here is a view from University Street and Leslie, from the office complex, the medical office at the corner. This portion of the hospital campus is within Can Do Neighborhood Association. It is adjacent to SCAN Neighborhood. We did not receive testimony for Can Do prior to the hearing. Although Can Do did not submit testimony, they did review the sign, the proposal, at their October meeting and did not have concerns with the proposal. That is, part of information was submitted as an addition. Prior to the hearing, SCAN submitted testimony indicating that they did not have concerns with this request. Just recently, they, they did indicate that they have reviewed the hearings officer's decision and concur with his conclusion. We did receive written testimony from one citizen prior to the hearing that the proposal did not seem to meet the hardship criteria to approve the variance. The hearing officer agreed and found that there was not hardship due to the unique or physical condition of the property. He indicated that the hardship, that the property is zone PH and that the zone is restrictive to illuminated signs. Therefore, he denied the request based on the applicant's failing to satisfy the criteria. Staff's recommendation for approval was based on the physical size and the unique nature of the use of the property. Salem Hospital is very large, 32 acres, and it provides many services 24/7. If the sign is allowed to be illuminated, it will be able to provide service to staff, patients, and visitors where, whenever they're on campus. Staff analyze, analysis did not find any negative impact to surrounding properties. The sign will not be visible from nearby residential properties. The sign will be visible only from properties to the east and to the south. However, the uses on those properties are medical offices, a financial institution, and a city park. These entities are non-residential and mostly closed during the evening when, where the illumination would have the maximum impact on the surrounding properties. Staff also found that the sign would not adversely affect the adjacent property signage or uses since illuminated signs are permitted in those zones. Based on the analysis, staff believes the criteria has been met. Other than the illumination standard, the sign meets all the other sign code standards. In summary, the compliance with the standard would create a hardship due to the unique and usual physical condition on the property. The standard being varied is to illuminate a non-emergency sign. And the intent of the restriction is to ensure that the public is able to find their way to the emergency room. The sign will not distract the public from finding the emergency room because of the location on the building. The recommendation for city council to reverse the hearings officer's decision is based on the physical size of the campus being approximately 32 acres and the unique nature of the campus being operational 24/7. That completes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Do we have someone, anyone signed up for public testimony? All right, thank you. I'd like to recognize, we have three people signed up. John Christensen, Jack, Jackie Heavens, I don't think I'm saying that right. And Sharon Edwards. So we'll start with Mr. Christensen.
I really didn't want to talk tonight at all, to be honest. Not about this, about anything. I'd rather be home watching a basketball game.
Yeah, so would we, so here we are.
If you'll allow me.
But you only have three minutes.
Okay, I'd like to speak as-
Unless you're representing your neighborhood association.
And that's what I'd like to separate if I can.
So how many minutes, just give me just a second. How many minutes does he have?
Three minutes as a neighborhood, three minutes under his own behalf, and I think five minutes for the neighborhood association.
So does that mean he has eight total, or he has five?
No.
I'm not sure who he's testifying for.
All right, who are you testifying for?
I don't want eight total.
All right. Are you testifying as an individual or as the neighborhood association rep?
I'd like to report to you what the neighborhood association decided.
Okay, five minutes.
I won't need that, ma'am.
That's okay.
On Thursday, the SCAN Land Use and Transportation Committee, by a six to zero vote, unanimous vote, decided to concur with the hearings officer's decision. What's not been, and I'm not going to get into a contested situation with staff, but what you're not hearing from staff is, in my view, the view, is the hardship requirement that the code requires is not being addressed. No concerns, this is fine, nobody's going to see it from that side. That doesn't address what the code itself says. The rule of law is really what is at issue here in some ways. So I wanted to let that be understood. Okay, and if you want, I can come back and speak individually.
No, that's fine.
Individually. I want to explain a little bit of how I individually came to this issue. I had a friend who went through chemotherapy, cancer surgery at the hospital. And I went to see her a number of times. I met folks that were encountering death, their family members dying, some of them for the first time in their life. I walked out of the building one night, not very far from where that tower is, and I found a young woman weeping in total mourning that she had lost her mom, who died. She was on the ground. I picked her up, I talked to her, I helped her up, actually. And then I started, because I've studied architectural theory and design, things like that, I started thinking about what a clock means culturally, socially. And then I started looking at the code. And I, I looked at the poem of Auden, and I looked at films. A friend of mine is a Danish filmmaker, and clocks say something different to someone when someone dies. And they talk, it really symbolizes the finite nature of life. And that's where I began to look at the code and say, "Do we need the clock?" This hearing tonight is not about that, but I wanted to explain the pathway for how I got to here tonight. And I, it began when I was a little boy. I went to Mount Vernon. And today's George Washington's birthday. When he died, they stopped the clock. And that's been the tradition for hundreds of years. So I look at it from a design perspective, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Christensen? All right, thank you for coming. Appreciate your testimony. And is it Jackie Heavens?
And I don't know if this is the right time that I should be speaking.
Can you speak right up into the microphone?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, welcome. But I'll just go for it, you can stop.
And we need your name and your address or your ward.
Sure. So my name is Jacqueline Heavy.
Heavy, thank you.
Yes. I live at 747 Church Street Southeast in Ward 2. And I'm a neighbor directly across the street from Salem Health Development of the former Oregon School for the Blind property. And I really appreciate this time to discuss issues of lighting in the hospital campus. The cumulative lighting effects from Salem Health's campus onto the residential neighborhood of Gady Hill continues to be of great concern for neighbors, as our counselor, Tom Anderson, is very well aware. Unfortunately, the neighborhood has been left with unanswered questions about the lighting plan for the new playground at Church and Mission, as well as the plan for additional street lighting along Church Street. These decisions hold the potential for an immense amount of new lighting on top of an extremely well-lit campus. At the December Historic Landmarks Commission meeting regarding illumination, they recommended that Public Works continue a dialogue with our neighborhood about the Church Street lighting plan. And the neighborhood has reached out to Public Works, and to date, we're still waiting for any type of response. Currently, my family has purchased the blackout shades. We now pull curtains at night. And we just continue to ask the hospital to find ways to soften their campus lighting. More subdued lighting has broader compatibility to Busch Park in the historic residential neighborhood of Gady Hill. Again, we've just been left with a lot of unanswered questions about lighting that continue to have a large impact on the livability of our neighborhood. And thank you for hearing the concerns.
Thank you. Are there questions? Councilor Bennett?
Thank you. So the, the issue then that we're talking about here is different than what you-
It is.
But I'm interested, I'm really interested in what you're talking about. So I'm just going to ask you about it anyway.
Great.
Is there signs that there are, is lighting going to go in on Church Street that you all have not requested to be actually street lighting on Church Street? Am I understanding that?
So what we have heard is that there's some mandate that, that there needs to be street lighting along Church Street.
And you have none now?
We have none now. That they're going to expand the sidewalk. Thanks to the neighborhood, they're going to expand it east, and they're going to put in this street lighting.
Okay.
And by and large, the neighborhood has said, "Whoa, we have, it is a landing pad of light over there. We do not need any more lighting." And unfortunately, it looks like that process is moving ahead. We have not heard anything about what that lighting will look like.
Okay.
I want to introduce Peter Fernandez, Director of Public Works.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. What is required of the hospital is to install standard street lights on Church Street. Five, six luminaires, it's whatever, whatever the appropriate distance is. There'll be LED light on a street that doesn't have lights. It's a requirement of developing the property. And that's, I did meet with neighborhood representatives, and I let them know that there was a requirement, that we were moving forward. We were not going to change that requirement for the hospital.
Okay. I think that's your answer.
Well, we still have questions about what that lighting will look like. We think, being a historic residential neighborhood, that really the lighting should be more period and nature, not necessarily a standard issue.
We checked with the historic planners, and it's just the standard fiberglass poles. There's, because there's no lighting there previously, it's not appropriate to put in any kind of, of something that would imitate history. So we checked on that, and what, what we were told is that the standard fiberglass poles is what's to be installed.
Okay, I've got a couple people with questions. Councilor Benars, and then Councilor Anderson.
Quick question. So you live on, you said Church?
Right on Church Street.
Right on Church Street, between what would be, what, Mission and Pringle Hall, more or less, and further down. My, my question to you is this, is right across the street also, on the other side of Mission, is a very large football field that has its lights that sometime can go on until 11 o'clock at night. And included with that is the tennis courts adjacent to that that also have quite bright lights that I've seen from quite a distance away. Has that been a problem in your view?
You know, it never was, and now that the trees have all been taken down, we do see those football stadium lights to a much greater extent than, than ever before.
So you have any suggestions on trying to shield that from your, from that neighborhood?
Oh, in terms of light shielding? Well, I think that could be done, too. That would be-
Yeah, I'm going to interrupt because we're getting off topic. The topic of this hearing tonight is the clock tower. It's not the surrounding neighborhood light, et cetera, so I want to get us back on to target. Councilor Anderson, do you have a question that relates to this evening's hearing?
Well, no, but I do have-
All right, then that's it.
I'm sitting here trying to think how I can do that, but I would like to talk with Director Fernandez, and I apologize to you for not following up on this when you emailed me a while back ago.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
All right. Sharon Edwards. And again, I want to reiterate that we're talking about just that one particular edifice, okay?
That's fine. My name is Sharon Edwards, and I live at 735 Church Street Southeast. And I realize that that's what you said, so can I then address my comments at, on public hearing number seven? Wait a minute. There was a place where public comments could be made. Is that where I can make this?
Yes.
Oh, wait.
Are you talking about item eight, public comment, for anything other than the agenda? Yes, if you'd like to wait and do that, that's fine.
Oh, wait, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. I'd like to call, I believe it's Cheryl Nestor Wolf from Salem Hospital. Is that correct? No, hello, Salama, how are you?
It's Leilani Salama, representing Salem Health. Address is 890 Oak Street Southeast. Thank you, Madam Mayor and city councilors, for hearing our testimony. Just have a few points we'd like to reiterate.
And I should interrupt and say that you, as the applicant, have a specific amount of time, 15 minutes? All right, thank you. All right.
So I would just like to reiterate that the intent of the code, as it applies to the public health zone, is to help with the navigational ability. Like many campuses, the hospital campus is large. It has many buildings. It's difficult to navigate, especially for first-time visitors. The intent around the code of illuminated signs is to make sure that people are not confusing the emergency room with anything else. So in reality, the intent of the code is the hardship that places, is placed upon the hospital. Because what we want to do is we want to light up a clock that is on a 24-hour-a-day campus. And that clock will actually be a central point on the campus that will aid our employees, our guests, our visitors in that same navigational function that the code itself intends to do. So that's the clarification that I wanted to provide to you tonight. And I would like to point out that at the time that this particular variance was submitted to the city, SCAN had no problem with it. And as was mentioned by Amy Dixon, neither did Can Do. I went to their October 20th meeting. They reviewed the variance. They had no concerns. So I think that's important. So I think that's important. And finally, I just want to draw your attention to the testimony that I believe you received in your packet from resident Michael Livingston. And I think that's just an interesting question as to whether or not this really is considered a sign. And I think that just merits further discussion. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Salama? All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. We will go back to staff and see if there are any questions for staff. Counselor Anderson, and then Counselor Nanki, and then Bednarz.
I'd be curious as to your response about what the intent of the code is, as indicated by Ms. Salama.
You mean that if this is a sign or not?
Yeah.
The --
No, 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 no. As far as I'm concerned, that's too late. I mean, it's been acted like it's a sign. We're here now on this, and, you know, we'd have to start all over again if that were the issue, and it's too late to look at that. So I'm curious as to about the intent of the code is to not confuse people.
The intent of the code is that during an emergency, people are, you know, they're looking for the emergency room. When they're on campus, they, their directional signs, the intent was that only emergency signs would be illuminated, so they could find the emergency room.
All right. Thank you very much.
Let's see, who was next? Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think we talked about this a little bit last week as well. Will we change code? Because it doesn't seem to apply correctly here.
Perhaps I could speak to that. I'm Glenn Gross. I'm the community development director. By changing code, I need to make sure I understand what you're referring to.
Well, to differentiate between things that may be confused with directional indications to an emergency facility versus other illumination potentials.
Well, that would be one way to look at the code, and perhaps that is the best way. I don't know tonight. But another way would be to look at, does the code need to be supplemented by another provision other than a variance to get at this kind of a request to modify a standard? And the reason I say that is we have something called an adjustment that's allowed in the zoning ordinance for pretty much everything else that's, that is covered by a standard. And the adjustment criteria, rather than being the hardship and the unique physical nature of the property, that criteria is just, is the intent of the standard being met by another means? And is it equally being met or better being met? And I think if we had a provision like that in the sign code, which we don't, but if we did, I think that would have been a more direct way to get to where we concluded tonight. So if that's what you mean by the kind of code change, that would be one way to look at it.
Because of how there's been concerns as to whether or not it truly, you know, meets those criteria or not. But you look at it, and you just don't know how one could say, well, it's, to me, it's not a sign. If we had three swirly things or an architectural feature on the outside of the building that would be considered art, and they wanted to light it up, would it apply to this illuminated sign thing?
Well, it's complicated. And I will tell you that we have determined that a art-type feature, a graphic-type feature, that is associated with a type, a certain business, was in fact a sign. Because the point of a sign is to get the public's attention, to draw attention to something. Usually, it's the product or service that's being provided. Our practice has been to call this kind of thing a sign for as long as I have been here. To deviate from that, perhaps we could do that, but I wouldn't want to do that without a lot of thought and a lot of input from legal advice and people that understand the First Amendment rights and so forth. So I would caution about just saying it's not a sign, because that might open up things that
Oh, yeah.
we would want to call a sign.
And it's staff's opinion that a variance is the most appropriate way to deal with this issue.
It's the only way we have in the code today to deal with this issue.
Okay.
All right. Counselor Bednarz.
I think the questions I wanted to answer, have answered, or mostly, have mostly been asked at this point. One of my questions was, how can we overrule code? And the answer, I think, if I'm hearing this correctly, is if they went through a variance process?
Yes. That's what the request is.
So that would be a step that they could take, or?
That's what the request is. That's what you're considering.
Okay, okay, okay. And another question I had was, well, the rule itself in pH zones, where did that come from? And?
I'm sorry, I didn't --
In the pH zone?
Yes.
Where did the ruling come from? Was it just something because of the logic of direction and not confusing people?
Yes. That's our understanding, is that it was, the provision to not allow illuminated signs in the pH zone was to, except for directional signs, was to make sure that people were able to get to where they needed to be in an emergency and wouldn't get confused.
Okay, I'll leave it at that.
Also, when the code was developed, our hospital campuses were a lot smaller. You had the one on Center Street for the maternity ward, and then the Salem Hospital was only one building. And so to have illuminated signs for directional, people needed to know where the emergency room was.
I know we don't have, for example, religious hospitals we do in Portland, where they might have a cross on the side of the building that might, they might want to have lit, or the old-fashioned, I think it's just a crisscross, a white cross kind of thing, you know, emphasize what they do. Not that it's directional. It is in a form of art, but it's, you're sticky wicket is what I'm hearing.
Counselor Bennett, did you have a comment or question?
No, I'm just waiting to make my motion.
Okay. Counselor Nanki.
Just one last, all those buildings have numbers. So none of those numbers are illuminated at night?
That's correct. They did get, there was a variance for some of the entry signs, the tall pillar ones. They, it was prior to this. We had another set of criteria for variances. We have changed that. And so before, they did get variances for some of their signs to be illuminated that are not the emergency ones.
Yeah, because that confuses people as well. I'm trying to find my loved one who's over here for something and
Yeah, none of the numbers are illuminated.
Okay.
Counselor Bennett.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right.
Madam Mayor, I move that council reverse the hearings officer denial of variance sign permit case number VAR 1502 for property located at 939 Oak Street Southeast, and affirm the staff recommendation.
Second.
I'm sorry, I'm supposed to close the hearing.
Whoops.
The hearing is closed.
Do you want me to do it again?
No, you keep going. That's fine.
Okay. Thank you. You know, I've been in Salem long enough to have many times in my life been told to meet under the clock. And that meant, go to Myron Frank, go stand under the clock and wait for somebody. It was directional. It wasn't a sign. It wasn't, you know, it was a whole batch of other things. But ultimately, it, I guess, if you define a sign as directional, and somebody said, "Meet me under the clock," you pretty much were looking for that as your sign. I mean, there's so many different ways to look at this, at this question. I, I don't know. I, I don't see any negative impacts to this. There is no residential impact. And I think it actually improves substantially the directional potential at the hospital. I mean, I have been there often enough now, having just been in for several days, to know that telling people I'm in the DBA-whatever building, where it would be so much easier to describe to them, so they can deliver those cards and letters I'm waiting for as I lay there in pain, that it's, I'm to the left of the clock, or I am in the building where the clock is located, or, which I guess makes it a sign, I guess makes it a sign post. You know, I mean, there's, it could be, I'm just kind of, I'm at a loss that this is even in front of us, that this wasn't resolved, as I think it was by the staff initially. My neighborhood group, who is the neighborhood group for the hospital, says, no problem. CanDo says, absolutely not a problem. SCAN said, no problem, until I think prompted to say, maybe, could be. But I think we ought to just move this thing along. And if we need to change the code someday, Glenn's got a bucket list of code changes that we'll be working on for years to come. Put it on the bucket list, and we'll talk about it.
Counselor Lewis.
I want to echo some of what Counselor Bennett said. I, too, welcome the idea of having something at that zoo called the hospital that I can use to get to where I need to go. The other thing that I don't agree with is, is the idea of changing the rules to try to meet certain circumstances. It's amazing to me how many times we get to the point that we're at tonight, and that is, how to interpret a rule. One of the things that I took away from lawyer school was that we, we have rules, laws, ordinances. We should use them to guide us, not to control us. And here we are again tonight, where there are some that want us to use this rule to absolutely control us. And we need to use it to guide us, and this motion does exactly that, guide us in the right direction. It really is simple. And I wholeheartedly support the motion.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson.
As a lawyer, from lawyer school, and from almost 40 years of being a lawyer, I'm very interested in process. I'm not interested as much in the intent, or what legally you might call the parole evidence rule, which is testimony that's brought up different than a writing, and that situation, the writing controls. I've read the hearings officer's decision, you know, and the way I read the criteria set forth in 040 of chapter 900 of the code, is the way the hearings officer read it. They have to comply with this, if compliance with the standard would create an unnecessary hardship due to unique or unusual physical conditions of the property over which the applicant has no control, such as topography and lot shape. There's no evidence that that, the condition of the property that may be there is things that the property owner has control over, where they build their buildings, how they build their buildings. The hearings officer, in his opinion, says, "The hardship was created by the zoning of the property, which is the pH zone, not by unique or physical conditions of the property." So looking at this on a process issue, not an intent issue, not of, well, we could do things differently, as Director Gross talked about, I just don't see that this provision of the code has been complied with. So I'll be voting against the motion.
Counselor Bednarz.
So first off, if I've got this right, this is Building D, is it? So Chuck, I don't think you want to be there. That's the maternity building, I believe.
Arms across the way, and people still --
Say what you want to say. Anyway, one of the things that drove me
It's hardship on me.
One of the things that I wanted to say was, one of the things that drove me to the seat in this council was, was the rationale behind rulemaking. And then it bothers me that we don't look at the rationale enough, and that we just say, well, they have a rule, and I'm going to apply this rule, and that's what it's going to be. But there's all these little things that change along the way. And in this case, we didn't have the hospitals in this community that have ever been this large. This is obviously grown up to be a very mature hospital and facility. And I'm with Counselor Nanki in the sense that I really don't look at it as a sign. I know, technically speaking, by the rules, that we have to govern our signs. It's a First Amendment thing, and they have, you know, the right to have certain things and freedom of expression. But this is one of those places where I think it's not a sign, it's a clock. And it's a landmark, and it's directional to me. Well, Lamont has the Hatfield Clock, and you're right, Counselor, you know, we meet underneath the clock at the library, the Hatfield Clock. And so to me, it's directional. I will be supporting it. I do believe that it's not going to have that much hindrance in the neighborhood. I frankly think that those numbers, or letters, rather, on each of the buildings should be eliminated. They're directional as well. So you get there at night, and you can see A, B, C, and D. But that's another fight altogether. So I guess
Only on the emergency room.
I'm just, the big thing for me was, I want to have some rationale behind the rulemaking so that it makes sense. It's not just a rule that we apply. There's a rational, good reason for it, to apply it in this particular circumstance. And this being a public hearing on a variance, I think this is the place that we can make that, make that decision. And I think we should go back and take a look at the pH zone at some point in the future.
All right. Any further discussion? The motion on the floor by Counselor Bennett, and seconded by Counselor Bednarz. All those in favor of the motion?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Lewis.
No, I seconded it.
Oh, you, oh, you seconded it. I beg your pardon. Thank you. All right. Motion on the floor, made by Counselor Bennett, seconded by Counselor Lewis. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries, and Counselor Anderson should be recorded as voting no. And Counselor Nanki voted no as well. All right. Thank you. Yes.
Just for members of council, this is still a quasi judicial proceeding, and it's still ex parte, and still you have adopted a written decision. So please try to refrain from having discussions with members of the public regarding the substance of the application. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
All right. We're now at the point of our meeting for special orders of business, which means we will go back to item 3.3B, which was pulled by Counselor Anderson. 3.3B having to do with the intergovernmental agreement for transfer of real property between the City of Salem and the Salem Kaiser School District. Counselor Anderson, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Thank you.
I move that we postpone action on this matter until there can be a further, further discussions among the councilors and the school district and the city itself.
It's been moved by Counselor Anderson, and seconded by Counselor Benjamin, to pull this item and delay it from further action until, did you say when, or did you say what?
No, I didn't. I said nothing. And Counselor Nanki discussed a work session. I don't know if we need that, but we need some sort of staff interaction, and not only on the issues that were raised by Mr. Christensen, but I'm, you know, I'm looking at the, I'll say this again, the penultimate bullet point here, one of my favorite words tonight.
We should bifurcate it.
Yes. It says, "The city and SKSD agreed to use their best efforts to maintain public access to all properties involved in the transaction." Well, best efforts, I mean, I don't like that word. That's, that's, what does that mean? You know, I mean, one person's best efforts is another person's stonewalling, you know? So it seems to me that we really need to delve into this a bit more. I know the importance of McKinley Park in my neighborhood, and I'm sure the other councilors know the importance of parks that are in their neighborhoods and wards that are very close, aligned with schools. And I just think we need further discussion of this. And if a work session is appropriate, that would be fine with me. But I don't know that we necessarily need one at this point. But the staff may come back and say, we need a work session, and that's fine with me.
Okay. Now, I have five counselors hands up. Counselor Dickey is first, Counselor Benjamin is second, Counselor Nanki is third, Counselor Bednarz is fourth, and that's only four. I miscounted. Counselor Dickey.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a number of questions. I don't know if they can all be answered tonight, but I'll just start here. So I remember when we were working on the Parks Master Plan, we had some discussions about these kinds of properties. The one I specifically remember being part of the discussion was the one at Sprague. I actually don't recall all these other little ones, you know, all over the place, really being part of the discussion. Kind of looking through, some of them make sense, some of them I have questions about. So a couple questions I have is really, well, one, so I know a couple in my neighborhood, one specifically the Stevens-Yoshikai, great big field. It's a city park property, but it's really, we can't really develop it because it's kind of between two schools. While it makes sense to do some sort of swap with the school district and turn that over to them, I also remember, when I was first on the council, and we had lots and lots of annexations, there of annexations, there would be, criteria for those annexations would be, well, there's a city park within, you know, X number of miles or whatever from the proposed property. If these go away and there are no longer city parks, what do we use for criteria when we start seeing more annexations come in?
Well, Counselor, we can get into the specifics of what decision making went into the transfers, but I think there's an overarching thing that the council should recognize is that just because we're transferring some ownerships back and forth between two public entities doesn't mean that the public isn't going to be able to use these properties. So all of these, all of these open spaces, especially the elementary school ones where they basically act as the school's playground, those properties are not available to the public when school is in session. They are available to the public after school and on weekends, and they would continue to be available to the public after school is in session. And the Salem Kaiser School District is a public entity with elected officials, the same as we are here. So we don't understand that there's any intent to secure these properties and lock them away so that the public wouldn't be able to use them.
So, and I understand that. And I know we had a lot of discussion about even the school parks, you know, on the Parks Master Plan because the frustration with when the schools didn't have those open even though they were city parks. So I know we had a lot of discussion about that. I guess my question is, you know, if something gets turned over to a school, not to say maybe it's completely open to the public, but then when we have somebody from the planning department doing a presentation saying, okay, this property wants to be annexed, and now the previous, what used to be city park property is no longer part of the city, then what do we say? What criteria do we say there's a proximity to a city park? That goes away. And that's why I'm wondering, what do we use then? Or do we have to add to our park property? And do we have to change the Parks Master Plan in order to make this happen?
So Mr. Keever's going to give it a shot.
I'll try. Keith Keever, Parks Superintendent. Well, first of all, there's only three properties that have been identified that we would transfer completely to the school district. The rest of them are just little realignments because in a lot of cases, we have park property and they have their ball fields over our park property. So we're just moving the line down to, so the property aligns with the current use out there. In the case of like Stevens Yoshikai, for example, we're still retaining the majority of that park in the middle of the two schools. We're just moving the property line down. So McKinley is one park that we are proposing to give up completely, and part of the reason for that is it's only an acre and it is completely within side the boundary, the use boundary of the school. And so the public has no access to it at all during school hours. And we didn't foresee a way, and he brought up, for example, whether we could use grant funding in the future for development. But because of the way it's currently being used, we don't foresee developing it as any additional park use because there's already playground there, there's already an open field there. So in most cases, we're just correcting some boundaries that have been wrong for a long time.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. I definitely think we need a little more information and discussion about this. So I'll be supporting the motion, but I do, I appreciate your explanation about that. I still have that question, though, about if any of these go away and we start doing annexations, what will we use as criteria? You don't have to, you know, that may be a discussion for a later time. I just know that that was something that several years ago was pretty significant. And, you know, we just haven't seen the level of annexations that we did, you know, seven or eight years ago. So thank you. I appreciate your answers. I'm sorry, I get a little passionate when I talk about parks, so...
Well, actually, Counselor, if you look at it, I think the one big gain for the city is property in West Salem around Greys Hill, where if there's going to be annexations, it's going to be there. And we actually gain 20-plus acres there. So I think your, and your concern is valid. I think, I think when this is looked at closely, you'll see that there's actually a net benefit from that, from the perspective that you speak to.
Counselor Benjamin.
Where's McKay Park fall in regards to this same rule that's being used for the annexation?
McKay is just like Stevens Yoshikai in that all we're doing is moving the property line down so it aligns with the way the fields are being used by the school district. And they fully maintain and use those fields. We still own and maintain the soccer fields.
Okay. Well, it kind of seems to me that, I mean, I understand the concerns about the local neighborhood in regards to a place that they've worked and got various grants and funding and stuff to put water fountains in. They're building a park. It's kind of the same thing I've been doing with Brown Road. So to see something like this can be scary. And just wondering, like I said, I don't know if there's other funding for grants and whatnot when you change the boundaries.
It wouldn't affect our ability to apply for grants. And again, you know, we did a master plan for McKay Park recently, and we had already taken that into consideration, the fact that the school already uses those fields. We wouldn't change that in the Park Master Plan. And so everything we would propose and everything that would be grant funding eligible would still be eligible.
Right. And so the concern of the gentleman that came down here about McKinley Park, and you've already stated, well, there's playground there, there's a water fountain at this point, there's an open field, can't imagine what else would they want to apply a grant for, you know? So, but there'd be other funding. I would think that there's other, because it'd be in a school district, there'd be other funding sources. Am I correct? Do you know this?
Yes. He's correct in that the school district is not eligible for federal land and water conservation fund grants nor the state lottery funds. That is something intended for local municipalities. But there, I'm sure there are other grants and other funding opportunities.
Right.
They just passed a bond a few years ago.
Right? Yeah. And you could just donate to your local school district, too. So, all right. Thank you.
Let's see. Counselor Nanki, were you next, I think?
Yeah, and it was just more to speak to the same thing because we did speak to this at some length during the Parks Master Planning meetings. And it was always the intent to come forward. I think it more, it just kind of caught everybody by surprise that all of a sudden it just popped up on the agenda. So I think we want to just talk a little bit more about it before we start swapping land, significant quantity.
Yeah. And if I could point out, and because it was a land use issue, that's why we didn't take it out to the neighborhoods, but...
Well, it was a property, it's not a land use issue. It's a, it's a property, a property issue. Yeah.
Yeah. I had asked a question earlier today. Did we talk with our Parks Advisory Board about this?
Yes, they were briefed twice on it. We've been working on this for a very long time, and it's just, there were negotiations that lasted several years as we went through meticulously to address these issues. And twice during the process, Sprab was made aware of the issue and was completely briefed on it.
Great. That's good. Was it Counselor Benjamin? No, Counselor Benard.
So I had a series of little questions here. First, I might as well dovetail into that one. So what was the consensus amongst the Parks Board? Did they support it? Did they question it? Did they reject it? We had a fairly lengthy discussion about it, and they supported it, everything we talked about. And they raised a few questions about some of the things that are raised tonight, and they were, seemed satisfied with the responses. So my main question that I was going to ask basically is, in reference to the motion that's at hand, isn't this the time and place to be talking about this rather than putting it off to some, kick the can down the road to some other time? I mean, the purpose of the motion was to delay a decision, and I'll respect that, but now's the time to talk, so love to hear from the motion maker.
Counselor, I...
I'm not quite rummy yet, so I can withstand a little more discussion.
So are, do you have a specific question? I want to be sure I understand what you're saying.
Well, I just, the maker of the motion...
The motion was to do, to delay this until there had been time for staff to talk with counselors. Correct?
And I just, it was basically it.
And then bring it back to us.
And I was saying, isn't this the time to be doing that? That was really...
Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to support the motion. You know, I would add, I hope, kind of describe what I think is a process. There's some missing people here tonight, not here tonight, missing tonight, not here. The school district isn't here. I have no idea what they think. I'd love to hear from their facilities manager, who we deal with and interact with regularly. And I hear about, related to ball field access, each year, my phone goes off the hook at a certain set of dates about ball field access, and it goes back to the, and in fact, I think he sits on our Parks Board. And have him come in. I think it'd be helpful. I think it'd be interesting to have Casia Quillan in here to answer our questions and kind of work with us on it, or a representative from the Parks Board. And then really missing for me when I look at this, and I know you guys have been working on this a long time, it's not slow it down, it's to understand it better, is I don't know what the neighborhood groups think. I mean, I look at these, some of this stuff, and I look at Highland, I have no idea what the Highland Neighborhood Association thinks about it. That could be my failing. If it is, I understand, that would be part of my discussion is for you to give me kind of, here's what Highland wrote to us when we talked to them, or some, you know, verbal. But each one of these that affect in my ward, where I'm most familiar, each one of these represent a park investment by the local neighborhood group, just the neighborhood group, comparable to what Mr. Christensen described at McKinley. When I look at Highland, Inglewood, which doesn't involve a whole bunch, but they're just a small amount there, but God, I don't know, is that the spot that they think is the most, the hallowed spot in Inglewood? I don't know. Because I haven't had a chance to show them this map and say, what do you guys think? And I'm going through this list. It's one after another like that, that may well be perfectly reasonable, but I don't have a way of evaluating it. And that's on top of Counselor Dickey, who I look to every time for a response on parks-related issues in terms of that master plan and how it interacts with all of our other thinking. I just feel unprepared to do this. Just that neighborhood, hearing Mr. Christensen just reminds me again how important that neighborhood input, because these folks really do, each of our neighborhoods have huge investments in these parks, huge investments, both financial and personal. They do all kinds of work on these things. I don't want to move without talking to them, and I haven't had a chance to.
Just a minute. Okay. Counselor Benard, and then Counselor Anderson.
So Keith, can you tell me a little bit, under the, under city control, our parks cannot be used at certain times of the year because of the weather. Is that same, well, I mean, we have muddy fields, so you don't allow people to go play football or baseball and some of the, and I hear that from the rugby people in our community. Under the school ownership, is that also true, the same thing? Does the school keep people off their property? Yes, generally, and probably more so because they're always coming to us looking to use our fields before they use a school fields. And that was one of my concerns, was that if we change the ownership of the property, that we change the availability of the property, and it sounds like they're going to be pretty much mirrored one to the other. Yeah. I can't think of any examples through all these proposed swaps where there would be any change to the use of the fields. We kind of share management of those fields, both city fields and school district fields, and I don't see that changing because all we're doing is moving the property line below the fields. And so it's not going to change the use of them at all. The second question that I had, had to deal with, changing the ownership changes the funding sources. And I, you mentioned just a little bit that said that there's probably other funding sources out there. Frankly, that is one of those questions that I would like to have answered if we're going to delay this decision. What other funding sources are allocated to the school district properties that can't be put on city and city properties, that can't be put on the school district? Just so we have a better understanding of the sources. And I think that's a question that really needs to be answered.
Counselor Anderson, and then Counselor Bennett.
I fully or fairly much expect that when we're fully informed on this, we're going to say, hey, this is a great idea, let's do it. But I don't think we're there yet, and I appreciate what Counselor Benard said, but there's enough questions here that I think we really need to mull it over a bit. I listed the one about what does best efforts mean? What do we think's going to happen there? What happens to Counselor Dickey's issue about annexation? Counselor Bennett about the neighborhood groups? And I look at this, and the whole issue of grants is very interesting to me, you know, and just my little looking at this, by my count, when I was reviewing this, I see 10 or 11 city-to-school transfers and five school-to-city transfers, and at least two of those in any given parcel were swapping back and forth. And, you know, what's the average acreage? I didn't quite understand this. I mean, how did we arrive at the $75,000 figure per acre? Then the issue about Greys Park, we've got, you know, if the acreage isn't the same, we're going to buy property or sell property at Greys Park for $75,000 an acre. I'd just like to hear a little bit more about all that stuff.
Counselor Bennett, then Counselor Nanki, and then Counselor Dickey.
I apologize for taking any additional time on this, but I had one thing that popped back into my head, and I'm probably dead wrong, but I'm going to tell you what the impression is at meetings I go to with my neighbor, one of my neighborhoods, that Barrick Field once belonged to, this is the story, Barrick Field once belonged to the city, had a little children's park in the little corner of it. At some point, the transfer occurred there, and the children's park disappeared, and the restroom. But this was really kind of a special little spot. And that gnaws on people constant. I hear about it fairly regularly because they're looking for a small children's park over there right now. And that's the only exam, I was trying to remember, I knew I'd been, someone had talked to me recently about a transfer.
You came into my office and asked the constituent.
That's right. I talked to the mayor about it. That's right.
That's right.
Sharing my concern, I guess, at the time. But that's the one example that I have that feels concrete, and I'd want to explore that with you to find out if that's how we did last time we traded something with the school district, if they left us hanging.
Barrick predates me. So I, we checked, and it is a school district property, so when...
When they got it or if they got it.
When or if, I mean, I guess we could do a title search. It has nothing to do with this, but...
Yeah. We also had a children's park over on the state fairgrounds that is now gone. I mean, I'm not sure we're winning in these discussions always, and that, I think that's what's given me a little trepidation here, that I just understand, I'm just, I look at these and it scares me, we will lose some children's, particularly toddler opportunities for moms and toddlers in my ward. That's kind of what these are often used for, so. So I'm going to include that as one of my talking things with you guys. I want to understand it better.
Okay. I think Counselor Nanki.
Yeah, and mine was kind of more of a general, it sounds like, you know, Mr. Christensen found it as it came up on the agenda, wrote us some concerns. Most of the neighborhoods haven't had a chance to see it. We're talking about having a sideline discussion, is would it be best to have staff, the staff report is out there now that basically shows everything we know, to make sure that they have a copy of that and say, hey, what do you guys think? Or do we want to talk about it first? It's just a matter of the speed with which we will move forward. If the staff is already just, you know, at least asking the neighborhoods if they have any comment, that can speed up the process versus waiting for us to sit down and meet and then say, well, why don't you go check with the neighborhood associations, which will add a significant amount of time based on when their next meeting's on.
Counselor Anderson, were you next with your hand up?
I was going to amend my motion if, but I can wait on that.
I think Counselor Dickey has her hand up. If you don't mind, I'll skip her.
Not at all.
Okay.
Thank you. And, well, to piggyback on your comments, Counselor Nanki, just making sure that if this information gets out to the neighborhoods, they understand, because some of these are like, this is the whole, the whole park in one. Here, you talked about some, or just, we're just moving the property line a little bit. So making sure that's really, really clear. But my comment was going to be, I know that we are now into SPIF season as well as Salem's Parks Foundation season. I have no idea if any of these properties are being considered by a neighborhood group for a SPIF grant or Salem Parks Foundation grant. And I mean, likely if it's just moving a, you know, you're in the bushes at Sprague on a ball field, that's probably not going to be the issue. But I don't really know, maybe some of these smaller, or the ones that are more, you know, playgroundy kind of parks. So that would be something to know before moving ahead with this, too. So I'll just throw that out there. And I would imagine if neighborhoods got a hold... just throw that out there. And I would imagine if neighborhoods got a hold of this information, they would know right away whether or not, you know, they, that was their intention.
I can't answer that, that there are no current SPF applications that involve any of these properties.
All right, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. My original motion was to postpone this pending a discussion among the staff council and the school district, and I will amend that to say pending a discussion among staff, council, school district, and neighborhood groups as appropriate.
All right, it's been, the coun, the motion has been amended by, from, by Counselor Anderson, seconded by Counselor Benjamin.
So you just need to vote on the amendment, and that'll replace the original motion.
All right, we'll be voting on the amended motion as amended by Counselor Anderson and seconded by Counselor Benjamin. All those in favor of the amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. That motion carries unanimously, thank you. Do we need to go back to the original motion then?
I, I think the, the amendment to the motion really supplants the original motion, so I don't think you need to vote again.
All right. Okay. Thank you. All right, that completes special orders of business. You see on your agenda, there are several information reports. Were there questions about any of the information reports? Counselor Bennett?
Yeah, just a, thank you, Madam Mayor, just a comment. I thought the results of the targeted grazing pilot project by the goats was really interesting. It was, I, I hope everyone reads it, because we did it as a pilot project to see if goat grazing would resolve some of the invasive species issues, and I thought the answer came back pretty straightforwardly, no. That in fact, goats, goats will do some of the work, but they won't do all of the work. And that if you want to use, correct me Keith, if I get off, too far off message here, but if you look at it, inmate crews do more, more completely accomplish the goal, as well as mowing, just our sta, I assume it's our staff mowing. And goats are, I guess notorious for having an unselective diet, and they'll eat everything in sight, including native species, kind of everything else that's out there. So I, it sounded like there's a, probably a place for them in certain kinds of terrain, but the difficulty will be to use them as a kind of standard cleaning. And then I thought the other part that just, was just really precious, was that it creates a barnyard smell, I thought was really, really an inter, yeah, it was just an interesting thing out in a former farm, to discover that.
How do you say that nicely?
That was nice. Thank you.
But your assumptions are correct.
Just to piggyback on what Counselor Bennett said, I found that report fascinating too, and all sorts of analogies that come to mind, and I'm not going to say any of them, folks, except to say that what, the conclusion I drew from that was, the only place this is going to have any effect is in steep terrain, where we don't want mowers, and we don't want even people up there sometimes, because of the danger from, you know, falling and twisting your ankle or breaking your leg, or something on steep terrains with brambles and bushes in them. And you're nodding your head now, Mr. Evers?
That is, yeah, that is correct. We can't run our inmates on slopes that are too steep, they just won't let them go on there. And obviously, we can't run mowers on those. So there, and there are some places in our parks, and I'll use an example, Nelson Park, where that could be a possibility, given, again, the right circumstance. You've got not a lot of native plants in there, and we want to try to control ivy and blackberry.
We're selling out helicopters with weeds.
All right, are there any other questions or comments on information reports? All right, we will move on to, we have no ordinances this evening, but I think we still have someone who'd like to speak at public comment, Sharon Edwards, and then there were others as well. Bridget Lorman, and, yes, that's it. Bridget Lorman and Sharon Edwards. Welcome.
Good evening. I, I know it's getting late, you know.
It's okay.
But this is my time to tell you my public concern, so I'm here about streetlights.
Oh, and you need to say your name and your ward or your address, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I, I, I'll repeat it. Sharon Edwards, at 735 Church Street Southeast, Gayety Hill, Ward 22. Thank you. Anyway, prior to the hospital's new campus going in, on Church Street at the corner of Leslie, the northwest corner of Leslie, there was one streetlight. The street was very dark, it's true. Since the campus has gone in, the light's very invasive. But they have streetlights that are the type that the city is talking about putting in on the street. They're, they're tall, they're bright, they're, they keep us awake at night. Jackie talked about her blackout curtains. I live on the back, I sleep on the back part of my house, and my house is still so bright, I can get up in the middle of the night and not have to have any light anyplace inside my house. And I can still see everything. Anyway, Gayety Hill is a historic neighborhood, and what I understand from the Historic Commission, that zone goes all the way across the street to the east side of the sidewalk on, on the east side of the street. There are 100 new lights there, and there are going to be more lights when they put the playground in. I don't think we need to add five or six more tall streetlights that are very bright. We have a lot of light now. There's still one streetlight, which is not invasive, it never was. It's a nice amber color, it's sort of historic, or well, maybe not historic. Anyway, I see my light flashing. And I think I've covered most of my points. The hospital isn't requesting to put the lights in, the neighborhood isn't requesting to put the lights in. There's lots of lights on Church Street now. If they have to be put in, I hope that the city would consider something more in keeping with the neighborhood. Thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you. Are there questions? I see Counselor Anderson's hand up.
Well, thank you. And now, now, unlike last time, this is related to the issues he's, he's discussing. This has been an issue with SCAN for a long, long time, starting with the hospital's acquisition of the property, and that, the lighting issue was one that we have, we meaning SCAN, when I was there, and currently still has emphasized again and again and again, there were about six bullet points that we wanted to, we were really concerned about, and one of them was lighting coming across the street. And so I repeat that, my apology to Ms. Evie, because she emailed me this a while back, and life got in the way, and I haven't done anything about it. But I think that it might be a good idea to have a meeting among the public works folks, the neighbors, and the hospital at some point. And I would be very happy to be in attendance at that meeting.
So would I.
If I may.
Yes.
The lights are a condition of development, so this is, this is a code requirement that was done. So, you know, I had a meeting with several representatives from SCAN, and we went over this issue. So there, I mean, at this point, I'm not sure what we could do, given that it comes as a condition of development, as is the wider sidewalk. So, so the issues related to light shining in from the parking lot and the property is a separate issue, but the streetlights are, I, I don't know that there's any flexibility that I would have, other than to assure you that these are going to be LED lights, they point downward. But Mr. Sturba isn't here this evening, Mr. Sturba speaks about how they tend to, to, where is Mr. Sturbo when I need him?
Yeah.
They tend to, to be downwardly directed. So, so, so I think there's, I mean, there's two different issues, and one is, I mean, the, the conversation about what the property is, is throwing off versus the streetlights, and I don't know that I have any flexibility related to the streetlights. So just to be, I'm happy to visit, I've already visited.
Right.
I'm happy to visit again, but I don't know that there's anything I can do.
And I, I understand the two issues that are related but not related. This is sort of just something that's, it struck me right now, well, is there a variance procedure for that, just like we heard the variance procedure for another part of the hospital property with lights?
Well, and, and I'll make, I'll make one other comment, if I may, if I may, Mayor. At the beginning of the meeting, we talked about another pedestrian fatality. And when we produced the report a month ago, there was a lot of discussion in the report that the, one of the contributing factors is darkness. And we've talked about lighting more locations. So, so this is, in fact, a safety issue. And there is a pedestrian crossing admission, and there, we expect a lot of pedestrians, there's a park there, there's a lot, there's going to be a lot more pedestrian movement, there's going to be a park, there's Bush Park, there's a park across the street, there's Pringle Park. So, so I would say that the concern about pedestrian safety and, and related to accidents, I think that I would very strongly stand here, aside from the issue related to the, the development issue, that this is a safety issue. And if we're talking about pedestrian safety, I think these lights very much argue to the point that we need those lights, not just there, but throughout the community.
All right, thank you. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you. Just, I'm, I'm just trying to recall that, driving through there at night, which is rare for me, but unless I'm going to the hospital, trying to find my way to the correct room.
Yeah. Do you have any more questions for the speaker? I want to interrupt and say, if you don't, let's let her sit down.
Well, is there a light on Mission Street?
There's a lot of light on Mission Street.
Okay, so.
And also, may I add one thing, that the lights in the parking lot at the hospital are the tall lights, LEDs, they shine down, and they shine out, and it looks like daylight. Please, go, go drive around there before you go home.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett, were you done?
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you.
Were you done with your questions? Counselor Benjamin?
Well, I was going to ask if, if, because of a safety issue and ordinance and whatnot, we're going to put five streetlights in, would it be helpful if there was a meeting of the, since the hospital's paying for it, they can get some lighting that's meets the neighborhood? Because that's kind of what I heard, two things. Too much light, if you're going to have too much light, can you make it look nice?
I think.
No, it is, it is, it is a street project, it's required by code, it is the standard, it is the standard luminaire, the fiberglass luminaire, like, would go anyplace in the neighborhood.
Who's paying for it?
It is, it is a requirement of this, of the hospital to install it.
So if somebody asks the hospital, hey, can you make them a little?
No, it's a, it's a code, it's a code requirement, and we have visited with the, with the historic planners, and the, the appropriate thing to install is a nonhistoric looking luminaire, so that you are not, in the industry it's called, you're not inventing history. It's clearly that that was added later.
Counselor Bennett?
So I happened to be at Pringle Hall here a few weeks ago, we were doing the, was it the master plan for the mental park, I believe? Anyway, I had a chance, I parked up, because I had my truck, I parked up on Church Street, and I noticed, I, this is one of the few times that, we joke with, about Ron Sturba, but this is one of those few times that I kind of said, you know, I was on the far side, I was on the west side of, of Church Street, and I looked back, and there was a lot of glare, there was a lot of exposed light bulb that was shining quite a ways to the side of, of where the lamp is. Ron has talked a lot about shielding and making that light go down rather than out. And is, are any of those lights adjustable, that we can help?
In, in the park or in the, or in the hospital property?
I'm going to say in the hospital area, because I have seen nothing in the park that, that's really that bad.
Yeah, I don't know.
And there's nothing on the street right now.
Whatever the hospital has installed, and I, I really don't know. That's a separate issue.
So that issue, could that issue be come back and be revisited with the hospital?
I, I think we can ask nicely, but I, I, you know, I don't know that, I mean, I don't know that, I don't know that there's any code provision that I'm aware of that controls.
The spread of light.
The, 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 I mean, I guess Mr. Gross could, could answer that, but I, you know, I'm, I'm not aware of anything that we could do once they're installed. I assume they were, they were installed the code.
I guess from my point of view, it would be a good neighborly thing if the hospital did at least visit the idea of trying to, as Ron would say, make it so the light is coming down instead of out horizontally to both sides, that it does shine clear across the street. And, and if it's possible, it may not be possible with the lamps that are there, I have no idea. But it would be suggested that maybe they visit that.
Well, I, just as, just one comment I would make, is there is a provision in the code that our code compliance officers enforce, that is there to prevent undue glare off property from a light on someone's property. I could ask that they go check out the hospital campus, just to make sure that's consistent with the code. I assume it is, but we could certainly check on that. Beyond that, I would concur with Director Fernandez, it's probably, it's, it's a matter of asking the hospital, if they'd be willing to consider something on their own.
Okay, thank you. If you would have, if it's okay with the council's permission, have somebody go out and take, at least take a glance at it, or a glare at it.
Okay, we have one other person signed up to testify, Bridget Lorman. Welcome. Just state your name and address, and you have three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on. At the end of three minutes, the red light comes on.
Great. Thank you. Hello, thank you, Madam Mayor and the City Council for this opportunity to speak. My name is Bridget Lorman, and I live on McClay Road. I do not live within the city limits of Salem, but I live very close to Ward 3. I am here tonight to talk to you because of noise. I'm also here tonight to talk to you because I love where I live. I have lived at my home for 13 years. Our home was built in 1880 on the original homestead of 640 acres given to the Glover family in 1850. Our home is about a third of a mile as the crow flies from the Panasonic facility located on Gaffin Road. I love where I live because I can hear great horned owls calling at night, coyotes howling in a symphony of crickets and frogs from the riparian area of Fruitland Creek. I can see hawks searching for field mice, vultures, vultures circling to scavenge the deer that the coyotes have feasted on, and bats darting around at dusk. However, since August 2014, I have not been able to enjoy these sounds or the sound of relative quiet because of noise generated by Panasonic. The noise can be loud, usually occurs in the evenings and overnight, can be heard inside my house with the windows closed, and can be constant for up to nine hours, and has occurred up to five days per week. I have been woken at night from noise from the facility, including a loud, high-pitched alarm-like sound, which after months of calling Panasonic to report the noise, it was found to be associated with one truck offloading gas. This issue has been resolved. For the ongoing persistent drone that I hear, I have been in contact with the Panasonic staff via email, and spoken to their security officers many times at night. Panasonic has said they will work on the issue. I have filed complaints with the City of Salem Compliance Division, Compliance Services. In my conversation with Brady Rogers, he indicated that the City of Salem's noise ordinances are really to address the issue of a loud rock concert or neighborhood party out of control. They are not designed to address the situation I am in, where the sound is constant, the decibels and frequency are of concern, and there are not only human concerns, but also potential consequences to wildlife. After requesting a meeting with Panasonic several times over the last 16 months, they agreed to meet with me four weeks ago. The issue is not as much decibels, as we were able to stand near the equipment that was producing the sound and carry on a conversation. It appears to be an issue more so of frequency. One would think that the ongoing wear of the equipment would become quieter with distance, however, this is not the case. Panasonic has indicated that they will attempt to work on blocking the sound. I am unsure of their timeline or how they will accomplish this, but I am hopeful that this issue will be resolved soon. I am here because I am concerned that the City of Salem noise ordinances are not sufficient when governing industrial operations near rural areas. I'm very concerned about the development at the 75 acres adjacent to this facility. Both Panasonic and the City of Salem have told me that the facility meets the noise levels required by the city. I am not convinced of this, I'm almost done, two more sentences.
Yeah, if you could wrap up.
Yep.
Thank you.
I think appropriate monitoring is needed overnight and late at the night at my house. And I also think, but I am concerned that, that my only recourse, and the only way to address this issue or potential issues is that, is when the company wants to be a good neighbor. I am requesting.
Thank you, thank you. I'm sorry, but we do have a three-minute limit. Can you wrap up quickly?
I'm requesting that the city look at their noise ordinances to address human and wildlife concerns.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony.
Madam Mayor?
All right, yes.
If I may quick.
Counselor Nanki?
And, and we've talked several times, Director.
And we've talked several times, Director Rutherford would be the contact, as far as letting you know what other development may take place at the Renewable Energy and Technology Center, so that you could have some input.
Yeah.
As a resident, we didn't know if she would be inside of the circle, that would be notified if she was not in the city limits, so.
Yes.
Maybe if you could get contact information, or I can pass along as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks.
Good, thank you, thank you very much. All right, we're just about done, if everyone can be patient, I appreciate that. I have two items under new business, Mayor's items, announce the appointment to the Human Rights and Relations Advisory Commission, as noted, both Carl Albert Pomfaddou, I'm not sure if I'm saying his name correctly, I'm not, am I? I see heads shaking, and Jaclyn Loong, to terms on the Human Rights and Relations Advisory Committee, and I also want to note, the National League of Cities Congressional Conference and meetings are coming up in March, and there is an item in your, on your agenda for that. The dates are March 5th to the 9th, and Counselor Anderson and I will be representing the city at the conference and in meetings with our federal delegation, so draw your attention to that, and I don't need a motion on that, it's information only. All right, I don't see any counselor items on the agenda. We are adjourned.